Royal Commission into Defence of Veterans Suicide is now resumed. Please be seated.
Yes, good morning, Miss Bridges. We seem to have music playing. I'm wondering whether we might be able to turn it off. Sorry, we'll play on.
May please the Commission. Commissioners, maybe it is best that we wait for the music to be turned off. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Commissioners, you will hear evidence this morning from a witness who has been assigned a pseudonym MB1, and that is pursuant to a non-publication direction, Commissioners, that you made on the 25th of August 2023, pursuant to Section 60, subsection 3 of the Royal Commissions Act 1901, 1902. After the witness this morning, there will be a short adjournment, and Commissioners, you will then hear evidence from Andrew Snatchell, PSM, the Director of Military Redress and Review, and that witness will continue to give evidence all day. On that note, Commissioners, I call MB1, who can now be sworn or affirmed.
You, MB1, solemnly declare and affirm that the evidence you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Just appearances.
Commissioners, it's Wijaya for the record, W I D J A J A, initial J, counsel for MB1, instructed by operational legal Australia.
Thank you, thank you.
Commissioners, because the witness is not going to be identified, at no point will the witness's statement be displayed publicly. It will only be displayed privately for the Commissioners, the witness, and the legal representatives.
Thank you.
Operator, please display privately wit.001.0001.0014. And Witness, can you see that document in front of you?
Yes, I can.
You produced a statement in response to a notice issued to you by the Royal Commission, is that correct?
Yes, I did.
And do you recognise this as the first page of your redacted statement?
Yes, I do.
And the statement is dated and signed 29th of August 2023, is that correct?
That is correct.
And the statement is 45 pages with the nectures. Those are nectures being, which I will tender shortly on a confidential basis, is that correct?
That is correct.
And to the best of your knowledge and belief, are the contents of the statement true and correct?
Yes, they are.
Operator, please display once again privately the tender bundle list, please. Commissioners, I tendered the documents on that list on the basis indicated.
Thank you. They'll be accepted on that basis and allocated the next lot of consecutive numbers. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Witness, you enlisted in the Australian Army Reserve in 2018, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And you are giving evidence today about your time in the Army Reserve and the administrative processes you were involved in, including two redress of grievances and your experiences with the IGADF, is that correct?
That is correct.
You give evidence at paragraph seven of your statement that you were subjected to ongoing bullying, harassment, and reprisal action, and that you separated from the Army Reserve in 2021 to protect yourself from further harassment and reprisal, is that correct?
That is correct.
Can you tell the Commissioners what your motivation for joining the Army was?
Sure. I had a professional interest in security and also wanted to give back, not to my community, but country and develop myself as an individual at the same time.
And you undertook your recruit training at Kapuka, is that right?
That is correct.
And your recruit training was interrupted for about thirty, about three and a half weeks when you were diagnosed with having a broken leg, is that right?
That is correct.
And then you had some rehabilitation and then returned, is that right?
That is correct.
And you applied to the Department of Veterans Affairs, and you say in your evidence that they quickly accepted liability and approved your medical treatment with private practitioners, is that correct? And you completed your rehabilitation and then you completed your initial employment training, is that correct?
That is correct.
And then in 2020, you then applied for in-service commissioning, is that correct?
That is correct.
Can you tell the Commissioners what that process was and what in-service commissioning is?
I'm sure. The in-service commissioning is where enlisted soldiers can apply to become a commissioned officer of their relevant service. That process involved having an assessment done by my commanding officer and completing a number of other documents, including statements of intent and a number of old forms. I then submitted them and then attended a selections panel where I was interviewed at length by the panel and given scenario-based questions. The panel then adjourned and then came back and stated that they found me suitable. And then there was an administrative process that followed in order to effect that in-service commissioning.
Thank you, Witness. And you say in your statement that you received a fight-to-get recommendation. And what is that, what is that recommendation?
So that recommendation is in the commanding officer assessment for my in-service commissioning, so it was completed by my then commanding officer, who stated that he would fight to get me back to the unit that I was posted to at that time.
And is it correct that that is the highest possible recommendation that someone can get in that process?
That is correct.
And was your application approved?
Yes, it was.
And did you complete your officer training?
No, I did not.
So then what happened after your application?
So immediately after my application, I received a formal notification that I was going to be transferred and that my rank would thereon become Officer Cadet. Shortly after that, I was contacted by a major who was running the full-time Army Reserve Officer Programme. And that programme allows reservists to go on a continuous full-time contract to complete their officer training back-to-back, so the five modules continuously, and then have a placement-type experience as a platoon commander for the remainder of that 12-month period to gain experience and exposure to command positions.
So is that a different process to what you had applied for, is that right?
No, so I'd applied for an in-service commissioning. As reservists, there are five training blocks. You can complete them as an individual training block, and generally they run one of each every six to 12 months, or there was the option to do them all together on this continuous full-time service basis.
And that's the process that you chose, the latter one that you just mentioned there?
That is correct.
And then you were posted, is that right? After, after, after the application and that process had finalised, you were posted, and then you commenced your training, is that right?
That's correct.
And how would you describe the initial part of the training, like at the beginning?
At the beginning, the training was, was good. The staff were professional, the training was far, and I observed no issues with the initial part of the training.
And then you give evidence that you started to observe some practices by staff which you say did not appear to be lawful and all consistent with your knowledge of Army and ADF practice and policy. And I'm going to ask you about those in a moment. But how would you describe your level of Army and ADF practice and policy?
I had a, I'd been on previous courses which had extensively covered, I guess, defence-relevant legislation, policies, procedures, and practices, both in planning of, I guess, the exercising of those procedures and also the execution of them as well.
So how would you rate your knowledge, perhaps compared to, say, some of the other cadets?
I would have had a far greater knowledge than the other cadets, the majority of whom were brand-new to Army, having just left high school.
Thank you. And can you tell the Commissioners about the first incident that caused your concern?
Yes, the first incident that caused concern was I observed the training staff undertaking room searches at the commencement of those room searches, which occurred without notice. They had lined up the course and told them that they were searching the rooms because they believed that service offences had been committed, and then proceeded to read a Section 101 Delta caution from the Defence Force Discipline Act to those trainees, of which there were approximately 50 trainees of whose rooms they searched. At no time during that process did I witness any of the staff produce a lawfully issued search warrant in order to undertake room searches, nor did they ask for the consent of those trainees in getting them to provide consent which would allow for the search under Section 101 Zeta Alpha of the Defence Force Discipline Act.
And at paragraph 39, and Operator, please feel free to display that privately, you say that you accept that administrative room inspections are permitted for health and hygiene purposes, is that correct?
That is correct.
And was it your observation that this was different to that?
Yes, it was. They had very specifically stated to the individuals of whose room they searched that they were searching it because they believed that service offences had been committed, and those members had received a DFDA caution. That would not be normal in regular administrative room inspections, essentially by stating that they believed that offences were committed and giving a caution, they'd made it a legal process.
Thank you, Witness. And then were you approached by any other trainees following this incident?
Yes, I was. So at the time, I was not subject to this room search because I had completed this element of training in a previous course. So I'd been given the data, so my room was not searched. But following the search, several trainees came to me with concerns because they had received a DFDA infringement notice for various, I guess, infringements of the DFDA. I stated to them that I wasn't a legal practitioner. It wasn't my position to give them advice, but I gave them a copy of the DFDA illegal officers list and also the contact details for an external law firm. I'm sure they wished to seek advice.
And can you tell the Commissioners, and it's at paragraph 41 of your statement, what other concerning conduct you observed?
Yes, so during the room searches, I could hear the staff conducting those room searches making derogatory comments to some of the trainees, which was inappropriate.
And how do you describe the language that was being used?
It was offensive with a lot of profanity.
And did you think at that time that that was appropriate?
No, I did not.
Commissioners, that paragraph is in front of you on the screen. Yes, Commissioner?
No, I was just going to say apologies, we're a little distracted by the music, which we are trying to get addressed. So apologies, Witness.
Would you like me to continue, Commissioners, or would you like me to?
Yeah, please do.
Thank you. And then, Witness, what happened after that?
After that?
Paragraph 42, sorry to interrupt you there. So before you go to the next section, but at paragraph 42, you give some evidence there about some events that were happening for, for your peers.
So the non-commissioned training staff had repeatedly stated that upon the trainees becoming commissioned officers, that they would refuse to salute them. And that on several occasions post their commissioning, that staff would take their berets off. It is military custom to salute when wearing a headdress, and they would walk off the path in an attempt to avoid saluting them.
And going back to paragraph 41, Commissioners, I'm not going to repeat the language in that paragraph, given that it may trigger or upset people. But I will say the sentence there, and I'm going to just say what was said, Witness, and if you could just let me know that this is correct or not, that one of the things that was said was, "You're all worthless and none of you deserve to be officers," is that correct?
That is correct.
And then another comment was, "We own you, that means we can do whatever the, we want with you."
That is correct.
And you say there that you believe that those comments went above the threshold of the Army's notion of tough training and instead constituted unacceptable behaviour, is that correct?
That is correct.
Do you still today, is that your evidence, that that constituted unacceptable behaviour?
That is my evidence.
Witness, moving to the next topic around the treatment during Training Block Four, can you tell the Commissioners what happened in 2021?
Yes, I can. So during the course, there was an allegation made by one cadet that she had been decently assaulted and raped by another cadet who was also on the course. One of the captains from that unit called all of the 102 trainees who were on that training block of the officer training to the lecture hall at the base that was, the training was occurring. That captain then informed everyone of the rape allegation that had been made against a cadet, and he had named both the alleged perpetrator and the alleged victim involved in that matter. I was previously aware of that allegation. The alleged victim had informed me about it about two months prior, and I'd also seen New South Wales Police on base in relation to that matter. After the captain had named the alleged victim, she came up to myself and another cadet and was very emotional, the fact that she had been named in front of all of her peers. She was quite distressed at the time. He had stated to me that prior to entering the lecture hall, she had been called to speak to this captain in his office, where she told me that she felt coerced in order to agreeing to allow him to name her in front of her peers. She then ran off from the area where we were conducting training and returned to her room on base where she stayed for a period of time.
Were you concerned about her, Witness?
I was, and a number of other cadets were concerned. And that was made aware to the training staff that there were some concerns about her welfare.
Were you concerned about how that disclosure was made in front of 102 trainees?
Yes, I was. I didn't think the, the level of detail or the naming of the alleged perpetrator and the victim was appropriate, particularly considering that there was an ongoing court process underway in relation to the alleged offence.
And did you raise any of your concerns at this time? And were in 2021, after, after the incident with those disclosures being made, did you raise these concerns with anyone?
I did raise concerns with some of the training staff and also informed a major from Headquarters Second Division about those concerns.
You give evidence about what you call racial discrimination. Can you please tell the Commissioners what you observed or what you knew about that?
Yes, there were three instances which were identifiable to me of possible or actual racial discrimination. The first was an individual with a non-Anglo surname. The staff would shorten or modify his last name into other words that were inappropriate and would then repeatedly say them in front of the entire course. This individual would become visibly upset that the staff were doing this. And at least on one occasion, I witnessed him asking them to cease calling him by these names, of which he received a patronising response, and they continued that conduct. The second instance was a cadet who, for ethnic or religious reasons, was a vegetarian and couldn't eat any meat products or any products contaminated by meat. He was not provided with vegetarian meals and was instead provided with meat-based meals, and that continued for quite some time. He raised concerns about that and requested that he be provided with vegetarian food. And he was told to eat around meat in his meals that he was given, or eat some bread, or starve. The last incident that I recall was a cadet who spoke English as a fifth language, and she was targeted, saying that she was deliberately pretending that she couldn't understand English or would forget how to speak English, and they would say this quite publicly to her. She had quite clear broken English but was still understandable. And I believe from what I recall, she spoke about six languages. So they weren't very accommodating of the language barrier there, and she'd often be made fun of as a result of her, I guess, broken English.
Thank you, Witness. And at this point, had you, and Witness, it was remiss of me to say at the beginning, at any point that you need to have a break, please do let me know if there's something that you don't understand or you want me to repeat the question. Apologies, I didn't say that at the beginning. And Commissioners, it was also remiss of me that I should have also said that there may be evidence that may be triggering or traumatising for people listening. Thank you. And at this point, had you been subjected to any improper or unacceptable behaviour?
No, I hadn't.
And then what happened next in 2021?
So I might just go back to the previous question.
Of course.
So my peers would often refer to me as the favourite child on course of the staff. So I would often talk to them during breaks. They would ask me to come join them for just social conversations. And on a couple of occasions, the, the training staff would have texted me on Signal, which was the messaging platform that we were using, to invite me to go out to the local pub or similar with them. And then on to the following question that you asked. I was outfield as part of one of the training blocks, and I was approached by... I was approached by a medic who stated that they were ordered to take me back to the exercise command post as I was too sick to stay outfield. And for context, at this time, there was a virus that had spread amongst my platoon, and there were numerous people who were sick. I had a runny, a minor runny nose at this time, but did not otherwise feel sick. I then returned to the exercise command post, where my rifle was taken away from me, and I was directed to report to the command tent. There was a major who was in the tent when I walked in, and he handed me an undated minute that was signed by a senior officer that stated that they were removing me from the course because of an allegation of unacceptable behaviour that was alleged to have occurred approximately three months prior. In the minute, the senior officer stated that they determined that I had likely committed unacceptable behaviour, and this was surprising to me, as I had never been interviewed or otherwise spoken to about any allegation that had occurred three months prior. And I wasn't given the right of reply in regards to the decision to remove me from the course at that time.
And Witness, if I just go back to your rifle being removed, were you told then why your rifle was being removed?
No, I was not.
And were you told, or did the minute detail the allegations of unacceptable behaviour?
I believe there was a brief reference to them in the minute, but no, it did not extensively detail the allegations.
And when someone handed, when you were handed the undated minute, did anybody spend some time to sit with you to talk about what it was about?
No, they did not.
Did anybody speak to you afterwards to say if you were okay?
No, they did not.
And you say there was no information in the minute about the nature of the complaint, is that right?
I believe there was a very brief reference, but it didn't detail the alleged circumstances, no.
And when you say you didn't, you weren't given a right of reply, is that, that the minute didn't invite you to reply? Or someone didn't say, "You can now reply to this"?
No, it didn't. So the minute, the senior officer stated in the minute that they'd made a determination that I'd likely engaged in the unacceptable behaviour and that as a result, they were removing me from course. There was no opportunity for me to respond to the alleged allegations prior to that senior officer making a determination to remove me.
So that, that determination was made without you being interviewed at all?
That's correct.
Do you know if anybody else was interviewed?
Not to my knowledge, no.
And what happened the next morning?
So the next morning, I reported to a warrant officer class one as directed. He explained to me that I was going to be charged that afternoon with a service offence under the DFDA and then would receive a notice to show cause for retention, which is essentially a termination notice the following morning.
And for the record, DFDA is the Defence Force Disciplinary Act, is that correct?
That is correct.
And then please continue, what happened?
With my prior service experience, I believed that my removal from course was done in a procedurally unfair manner, being that I hadn't been provided a right of reply, and that, given this warrant officer class one's comments, that there was a determination of guilt that had already been made in the matter, given that I hadn't been interviewed or any, to my knowledge, any investigation had been conducted into the allegation. They had decided that I was going to be charged and then given a notice to show cause for why I should be retained in the Defence Force.
And then you sought some legal advice, and I'll just ask you refrain from referring to the title of where you got that legal advice. Then you received some legal advice, is that right?
Yes, that's, that's correct. I received advice from a defence legal officer.
And then what happened after that?
So that legal officer and I discussed matter at length, and I had sent him a copy of all of the documents that had been provided, which was essentially just the minute. He told me that what was occurring was inappropriate. He told me that what was occurring was inappropriate and had infringed upon my rights to, one, a fair investigation, two, procedural fairness. I then compiled a statement of my account of the alleged incident and provided an extensive list of witnesses who could verify the actual occurrence of the alleged incident. I then demanded that the unit conduct a disciplinary investigation so that some sort of investigation had occurred into the allegation. I was then interviewed by two warrant officers where I again highlighted my concerns around the lack of procedural fairness in the matter. I provided my statement to those two warrant officer class twos. And then I'm aware that they contacted witnesses that I had provided their details to them. The next morning, I was called in to see a senior non-commissioned officer and was told that the investigation had cleared me of any wrongdoing. And as such, I would not be charged and would not receive the notice to show cause for retention. The senior non-commissioned officer then informed me that he had received advice from a legal officer that I had not been given procedural fairness in relation to my removal from the course.
And during this process, can you recall how you were feeling and whether it had any impact on your wellbeing at the time?
Yes, I felt quite frustrated and somewhat offended that I hadn't been provided, I guess, a fair process in both of the matters and that my guilt had essentially been assumed before any process had occurred. I was also concerned that this was a reprisal action, being that I'd raised concerns about the way the staff were acting to the trainees prior, immediately prior to this occurring.
And in paragraph fifty-two, you give evidence about feeling obligated to report conduct. Is this the conduct that you were just referring to then about the concerns that you had told the commissioners a moment ago about the behaviours, the unacceptable behaviours that you were observing?
That's correct.
And you referred to a chief of army directive. What is that directive?
So the Chief of Army Directive on Bystander Behaviour. So that directive essentially states that individuals who witness unacceptable behaviour must report that unacceptable behaviour.
And is that why you felt obligated, because of that directive?
That directive and also just ethical conduct in general.
Thank you, Witness. And then is it the case you then prepared a redress of grievance?
On the advice of the defence legal officer, he had advised me that I should submit a redress of grievance, which he assisted me in submitting.
And what was the nature of that redress of grievance?
The nature of the redress of grievance was the lack of procedural fairness that had been provided to me. In particular, my removal from a training course without procedurally fair treatment.
And after you got that advice, what happened next? You talk about being given permission to keep your mobile phone. Can you explain that to the commissioners about what happened there?
That's correct. So I was given permission by a senior non-commissioned officer to keep my phone on me for the purposes of contacting the defence legal officer. So after I was cleared of any wrongdoing in the alleged incident, I was immediately returned to the course, which was during its field phase. The defence legal officer wanted to maintain contact with me as we prepared the redress of grievance and then move to submit that redress of grievance. The senior non-commissioned officer who gave me permission sent a message out to the instructor group chat informing all of the instructors that I'd been given permission to have my phone on me. Normally, in the training environment, trainees wouldn't be permitted to have their phones with them in the field environment. The staff were also assisting in charging my phone for me. Being in the field environment, we didn't have access to power. When I returned to the field, none of my platoon instructors were aware of what had just occurred. And they informed me that they'd also been informed that I was removed because I was sick. And I informed my section small group instructor about what had occurred. And he cautioned me to watch for any further acts of reprisal that the unit might seek to take against me.
And what else did he tell you?
He stated that he was disgusted on how I'd been treated and that he didn't think that the staff were acting appropriately. And he also raised concerns with how dissatisfied he was about the interruption to my training, being the individual responsible for my training, and felt that it had set me back in undertaking that training block.
And then what happened after that, a couple of days later?
Yep, so a couple of days later, I began feeling extremely unwell as a result of the virus that had been going around my platoon at the time and also the stress of the situation that had occurred. So I was taken to the exercise command wanting to see a medic. When I arrived, I went to the medical tent and the medic apologised to me for essentially lying to me about the reason she was taking me outfield prior to my removal from the course. And then I stated to me that she'd been told that she was removing me so that I could attend a charge hearing. A sergeant then approached the tent and took my phone off of me and said, "You're not talking to your lawyer" and snatched the phone out of my hands at that time.
You can swear in a royal commission, but it's totally up to you about what you want to say. Just for the record, that there was a, it wasn't said just, "You're not talking to your lawyer". There was a swear word in there, is that correct?
That is correct.
And then, and then what happened next?
I was then taken to the command tent where a senior officer raised his voice at me and was a very short distance, a few centimetres away from my face as he began screaming at me and telling me to stop playing games. He was aware that I was submitting a redress of grievance as that's why I'd been given permission to have my phone on me outfield. He stated to me that if I wanted to submit a rogue, that he would suspend me from the ADF without pay so that I could have time to do that. Otherwise, that I should do it in my, quote, "own fucking time of which you have none", end quote. And while he was screaming at me, his face was so close to mine that he was spraying saliva over my face, given the level that he was shouting at me.
And was this during the period of COVID?
It was during the COVID pandemic, yes.
Were you concerned about your health because of that?
I was, yes.
And then what happened that evening?
So that evening, I was told, I guess for context, there were other trainees who were at the exercise command post as well for various reasons that night, including planning exercise that was taking place there. I was told to go into the middle of one of the fields surrounding the exercise command post and to hutchi up, which means to erect a small sleeping shelter. I was isolated during this time and there was no one else anywhere around me at that point in time.
Were you told why you had to do that?
No, I wasn't.
And it was an order?
It was an order from that senior officer who had screamed at me, yes.
And what would have happened if you didn't comply with that order?
I probably would have been charged at the minimum. But given the level of aggression and anger displayed by that officer at the time, I also had concerns for my safety, given the very aggressive behaviour that he was exhibiting towards me.
Thank you, Witness. And then the next day, you attend Holesworthy Health Centre, is that right?
That is correct.
And you saw a psychologist?
Yes, that's correct.
And then what happened?
So the psychologist said that I was experiencing acute situational stress as a result of not only the, my removal from course but also the incident that had occurred where the senior officer screamed at me and sprayed saliva on my face. He stated that he didn't think it was appropriate that I went back near this senior officer at that time. And he gave me a Defence Medical Advice Form, which is commonly known as a PM 101, which is the form number four, which was to return to my room on base and rest. I was then informed that a major did not want me to return to my room and had demanded that I be returned to the health centre and admitted to the health centre. The health centre had previously said that I did not need to be admitted because there was nothing medically wrong and they didn't have any concerns for my safety or wellbeing. It was just that I needed to be removed from that situation. And I then returned to the health centre where I was admitted to the ward for a night.
Did you feel like you needed to be admitted to the ward?
No, I didn't.
And the health centre said that they didn't think you needed to be admitted to the ward?
That is correct. I essentially just slept in the ward. The nurses weren't doing observations and I didn't see any medical staff past that point.
And you weren't expressing any suicidal ideation or suicide behaviours at that point?
No, I wasn't. The nurses were happy for me to leave the health centre and go for walks around base or just be outside and then come back, providing I was back by a certain time and had no issues. And I wasn't being monitored under any observations, medical or visual at that time.
And were you told why you needed to be admitted to the ward?
I was told by the health staff that the only reason that I'd been admitted is because an officer from the unit had demanded that I be admitted to the ward because he didn't want me to be in my room on base.
And you complied with that?
I did.
And then what happened after the completion of the field phase of the course?
So I received my Record of Atainment, which is a record of completion of the modules within that training block. And it stated that I had not been assessed on Formative Assessment One, demonstrate army leadership due to, and a, quote, "much sickness". I found this to be inaccurate, given that I had only missed one and a half days of field time due to the removal by the senior officer from course. And I didn't miss any of the assessments that I was required to undertake as part of that training block. I was still passed on that training block despite, I guess, the inability to assess me on that formative assessment and then I progressed to the next training block.
Did you want to say anything further before we move to the last day of the training block? Paragraph sixty-one.
Yes, so my section small group instructor had come up to me on the second to last day of course and had insinuated to me that he believed that the unit were going to try to do, you know, take further acts of reprisal against me. He stated to me that if I needed proof that I was outfield at a certain time, that he had gone to the other instructors, or so got one of the other instructors to write me an observation report and that he had filed it and taken a copy of it. He didn't state exactly what he believes the unit were going to do, but just said that he thought that they were going to pull something. And then we continued to talk about personal matters and other things after that.
What was it like for you being told by people that there might be attacks on you or be careful or warning you? What was that like for you at that time?
It was quite concerning. Up until that point, I hadn't been the victim of any unacceptable behaviour or improper conduct and it was simply that I had witnessed it. And then following reporting that, appropriately reporting it as well, it appeared that I was now becoming a target of unacceptable behaviour. So I was quite fearful most days. I wasn't sure what was going to occur. And there was obviously a difference in power. I was essentially the lowest rank possible and there were, all the training staff were obviously my superiors. So with the way that army functions essentially, I had to comply with anything they did and I was powerless to stop most things that they were doing.
We then turn, we've just moved now to the last day of Training Block Four. Can you tell the commissioners what happened on that last day of the course?
So on the last day of the course, there was a course evaluation survey that was sent out, which we were required to complete. We were taken to the lecture hall where the training was occurring and a warrant officer class one, who was responsible for talking to us about the survey results, had stated that someone had written in their survey that they were sexually harassed by a warrant officer during the course. The warrant officer class one asked the course for more information about what it's regarding as the survey response didn't include any details about what allegedly occurred. Two officer cadets then both stood up in front of the entire course and stated that they had both been sexually harassed by a warrant officer class two during that training block and that he had made, I guess, comments of a sexual nature towards them during that course and had made a comment to one of them that as platoon commanders, their diggers would be placing bets on who could fuck their brains out first.
And were you there when that was said?
I was there when that was said.
Can you remember what you thought or felt at the time?
I was quite concerned. Obviously, these were two young females, between eighteen to twenty years of age. And obviously, given that the power dynamics that were at play, I didn't feel that it was particularly appropriate for those comments to be made towards them.
And what happened later that day?
So later that day, another officer cadet told me that he had been verbally attacked by a major and that officer cadet informed me that he had asked for a review of his Record of Atainment as he believed that his Record of Atainment was actually incorrect. He didn't want to sign the Record of Atainment, the acknowledgement section of that form, until there had been an opportunity for it to be reviewed. The officer cadet told me here he was forced to stand in a major's office for around fifteen minutes while that major had screamed at him. And that major was the same major who had screamed at me at the exercise command post. He described that the screaming was so loud that the desk and the picture frames were shaking and reported to me that he was also bastardised by the major with trifling orders such as having to march around the office to different desks to sign forms. And that he was forced to sign the Record of Atainment against his will, that he was ordered to sign it, even though he didn't wish to sign it.
And how did he appear to you when he was relaying this?
He was visibly distressed, was shaking and crying. And this was an individual that had been quite emotionally strong throughout the course and hadn't really displayed any signs of emotions, but he was very visibly distressed at this time. And shortly after, he completely shut down. By that I mean, I was trying to speak to him, was getting no responses. He was staring at a wall, wasn't responding to, I guess, any stimuli that was, you know, other people were trying to get him to engage and was just completely emotionless and non-responsive.
And then what happened after that?
So after I spoke to that officer cadet, I was approached by another two officer cadets who had informed me that they had witnessed what had happened to the officer cadet who was verbally attacked by the major. And they recounted their version of events, which was consistent with the version of events that the original officer cadet informed me that had occurred to him. And they described it as disgusting and disgraceful. Those two officer cadets also had to see that major on that day and stated to me that they were next in line to go to his office and they were terrified about going into his office after witnessing that occur.
And these cadets, roughly in ages, are we talking about young people, are we talking about older people?
Both those cadets, all three of those cadets would have been early twenties.
Thank you. And at the completion of Training Block Four, what happened? Did anything happen after that?
Yes, it did. So the staff gave thirty-six hours' notice... Uh, yes, it did. Um, so the staff gave uh thirty six hours notice that they'd be conducting room inspections. Uh, of the trainees' rooms on base. Um, they stated that the rooms had to be uh of good standard. Um, but they did not um specifically define a standard other than uh, I guess, a broad uh good standard. Um, they then uh thirty six hours after the notice was given, um conducted the room inspections. Uh, where the staff's uh drawers, cupboards and bags that was in the room. Uh, which I knew to not be standard practice to uh rummage through drawers and and personal bags that were in locations such as on top of cupboards or under beds. Um, out of approximately fifty three trainees who were on course at that point. Forty one of them uh received D F D A C one infringement charges for disobeying a lawful order to have their rooms cleaned. Uh, and two of them received uh D F D A C two service charges for the same offence.
Before I move move uh to to the next point, witness. Just going back to that redress of grievance, the the first one. Did you want to make any further comments about in terms of were there any delays? Or anything about that process that you wanted to add to your evidence?
Um, sure. So after the um incident where I was screamed at by the major in relation to my redress of grievance. Um, I felt that if I had submitted it, that I it would have led to further incidents of reprisal or victimisation against me. Um, and I chose to defer submitting the redress of grievance at that time. Um, out of fear of what would occur um if the staff had found out that it had been submitted.
Thank you. And now going back to uh the searches, what happened as a result of those searches?
Um, so I guess during the during the searches, um I heard staff again make derogatory comments to some of the cadets. And some of those comments targeted their uh parents, uh or their upbringings. Um, I'm aware that some of the cadets uh received uh charges or C one infringement notices. Uh, for issues like having one droplet of water on their shower screen. Um, that their shampoo bottles weren't neatly in a row uh on the floor of the shower. Um, and another cadet uh was um received an infringement notice because he had one can of alcohol that was in his fridge. Um, at this point of the course, we were allowed to have alcohol uh within our rooms. Um, but he still received um an infringement notice. Uh, I'm aware that another cadet uh received an infringement notice because uh he was alleged to have had sweaty bed sheets. Um, and that this cadet, uh she, which was a female. Um, claimed that at the time that there was a sweat mark on her bed sheets that she was menstruating. Um, and as such, uh there was a a small sweat stain uh from when she had slept in the bed the night before. Um, I'm also aware that the officer cadet, who had allegedly been raped earlier in the course. Um, had asked the all male staff who had searched her room not to go through her underwear or bra drawer. Which they refused and proceeded to rifle through the drawer, uh which caused her to become extremely distressed and and to feel uncomfortable. Um.
How do you know that she was distressed and uncomfortable?
Uh, she immediately after the the room inspections was clearly shaken up and teary. Uh, and then I had a conversation with her uh to check on her welfare. And she'd informed me about what had occurred, that they were had been, you know, moving her underwear and bras around in the drawer. Um, and she at that point in time was feeling quite vulnerable, uh given what had allegedly happened to her. Um, and I think um was that was exacerbated by having two male uh training staff members. Conduct the room search with no other female present in the room with her at the time.
Okay. And would there have been some, would there have been women who could have done those searches?
Um, there were women posted to that unit. Um, there were no female uh training instructors at that time in that uh company. Um, but more broadly in the unit, uh and at the unit's headquarters, there were female uh officers and and female um non-commissioned soldiers. Um, so yes, there were females that could have been made available uh for the conduct of those uh room inspections.
And did anyone get charged as a result of those searches?
Uh, yes, they did. As I said, um before, there were there were fifty three trainees on the course. Uh, forty three of them received C one infringement charges. Uh, and two received um a D F D A C two service charge, uh also for the same um room inspections.
And did you receive a charge?
Uh, I didn't. I was one of seven cadets uh who did not receive a charge. Um, prior to the room inspections, uh a few of the cadets, knowing that I'd had previous service experience, asked me to check their rooms to see if they were up to standard. Um, and I couldn't find a fault uh with any of their rooms. They'd they'd gone to the point of cleaning light switches, cleaning on top of cupboards. Um, some of them had had broken legs at the time and were so fearful of being charged or what could happen. They were climbing on top of cupboards while in a moon boot or while they were on crutches. Um, and uh my room wasn't up to the standards of the rooms that I observed some of the others um had it uh had cleaned to. Um, and I also had a notable quantity of alcohol that was in my fridge when the staff conducted a search of my room, uh which they praised me for. Uh, and uh and I guess um were uh. Essentially encouraging me and and saying that, you know, good on you lad, uh patting me on the back sort of thing. Um, and and I was aware that, you know, another cadet had been charged for having one single can of alcohol in his fridge.
Is it your view that you think that the charges were made indiscriminately? Were they indiscriminate?
Um, the seven cadets who weren't charged were um. Uh, including myself, were the ones who were treated a little bit differently to other cadets. So, um while I was noticed that the favourite child of the course, there were other cadets who were also seen favourably. Or somewhat favourably by the training staff, um and they were the other six cadets who weren't uh given an infringement notice or a charge. The remainder of the cadets were all charged um or or given an infringement notice. Um, and it was obviously quite a significant number when uh essentially forty five of the fifty three people on course had either received an infringement or a charge. Um, and I I'd never seen such a large number of people charged uh during room inspections before.
Just based on your experience and what you were observing at the time. Can you understand or rationalise why some people were charged and others weren't?
Um, no, I can't. Um, my view on it was that um the charging or or infringement was excessive. Um, and I believe the staff may have been trying to use it um to, I guess, reinforce their power over the officer cadets at the time. Um, as I said, some of the reasons were just um inappropriate, such as having one droplet of water on a shower screen, but the room was otherwise clean. Um, just didn't seem rational um or to fit the standards of which uh infringements or charges would would normally be issued. Um, also, I guess the conduct during the room inspections was in uh was inappropriate. Um, there was an incident where one cadet uh was ordered to pretend to be a car wind wiper as he cleans dust that he had missed off of his desk. Uh, and that they sh- the staff had stood there and laughed at him uh as he was making these sounds that they had ordered him to make.
And what year was this?
Uh, this would have been um twenty twenty one.
So two years ago?
Two years ago.
And then was there an incident around parade?
Uh, yes, um so shortly after the room inspections, there was um an incident where. Um, the uh this unit staff had dismissed uh all of the trainees for the day. Um, because there were no more tasks for us to complete. Um, so a lot of members, uh given we hadn't had really any leave or any days off, it was a seven day a week course. Often sometimes twelve, fourteen hours a day. Uh, a lot of um trainees had gone to the shops to buy food or toiletries or to go get haircuts. Because we were still required to maintain um, I guess, dress standards, including haircuts. Um, uh at about fifteen forty five hours, the same day, we were ordered. Uh, via text message by a sergeant to be formed up uh in parade. Uh, in fifteen minutes' time outside of the company headquarters building. Um, and a lot of um those cadets had already gone off base to go get haircuts or or to the shops. Uh, and we're further than fifteen minutes away for them to return. Um, it also does take some time to get on base, given security processes um and the distance to travel on base. Uh, with, I believe, ten kilometre now speed limits. Um, so the members who were still on base uh had uh formed up for parade. Uh, and that the staff who were um there for the parade had had said that anyone who wasn't present was going to be charged as being AWOL. Uh, which is absent without authorised leave, uh which is an offence under um the Defence Force Discipline Act. Uh, we were ordered to stand there uh on parade for about fifty minutes until every single member had returned to base. Uh, was formed up on parade. Um, so standing up for that long, uh and I can see a few members becoming dizzy. Um, where you can't move on parade, your hands have to be straight uh by your side. Uh, and your feet have to be locked into a certain position. So there were members starting to sway. Uh, and at one point, one of the members had to sit down um because they were about to pass out.
And you give evidence about a meeting that took place. Can you tell the commissioners how that came about? And the evidence where uh witnesses were at paragraph seventy. But there was a meeting, was there not, to discuss some of these concerns?
Um, yes, so there was a a a meeting. Are you referring to the one in paragraph seventy three?
Yes. Is there anything else you wanted to say about paragraph seventy one, uh seventy to seventy two before we move to that?
Sure. Um, so I was approached by an officer cadet who was uh seeking advice. Uh, relating to a D F D A C two service charge that he had um been issued with. Um, the officer cadet informed me that he had a defence to the charge being that he was on leave at the time that the order was given. And therefore didn't receive the order. Um, and then um therefore could not have reasonably been expected to comply with the order, given that it was never given to him. Um, the process during um uh this sort of uh charge is that he was given a defending officer, which is one of the training staff. And there was also a prosecuting officer, another one of the training staff. Um, and he had told his defending officer all of this information. The defending officer then uh he he alleged went and told the prosecuting officer. And they then changed the nature of the charge to invalidate his defence. Um, and he believed that it was inappropriate, um that uh his defending officer had given, I guess. Confidential information to the prosecuting officer in order to facilitate him being charged. Um, and also that his defending officer was one of the staff members conducting the room inspections that day. Um, and was therefore involved in the process which led to him becoming charged. Um, the officer cadet told me that he was going to enter a plea of not guilty. Um, and I again advised him that I wasn't a legal officer and couldn't provide him with advice. Um, and I again gave him the D F D A officers', uh legal officers' contact list and um some contact details for an external warfare. Um, and then that was the end of of, I guess, my involvement in in that particular matter.
And then there was an, you give evidence, there was an after-hours meeting of the cadets, is that right?
Um, that's correct. So another officer cadet um called a after-hours meeting of the full-time army reserve officer cadets. Um, to discuss uh the treatment and conduct of the the training staff. Um, but, uh, so um another officer cadet and I took minutes of that meeting. Um, and we became aware that the uh conduct of the staff was uh far more widespread than I had initially. Uh, believed and a lot of the other cadets um as well uh weren't aware, um I guess, of the. Level and frequency of uh these allegations of unacceptable behaviour. Um, so we had a meeting and then shortly after, um I provided a major. Uh, who wasn't at the training unit but was in our higher uh formation um headquarters. Uh, with a summary of what was discussed uh at that meeting.
And operator, to display privately, please, for the commissioners, it's paragraph seventy three. Is the email and that email, witness. You should have also on your screen and is in your in your statement there. And that email, is that correct, that that details what some of the concerns were and the incidents?
That is correct.
Is there anything in that list that you haven't said to your, se- haven't mentioned to the commissioners? That you want to mention in terms of any of the other concerns?
Um, I I briefly mentioned it before, but um there was the lack of um days off. So the training uh programme had scheduled days off for trainees. Um, and those scheduled days off hadn't been occurring. Um, which uh wasn't allowing um some of the cadets to see family members who they hadn't seen. Um, some of them for for three or four months by that point. Um, or just to do first, but personal tasks such as get haircuts or or have their car serviced. Um, and we were also required to have black suits for training block five, the graduation ceremony. Um, and some cadets hadn't had time to go hire one of these, uh which it was stated in the joint instructions that there would be. A provision of time in order to go hire a suit. Um, and the staff had refused to provide this time to the trainees and said um that it was their issue and they could go. Um, take it up with uh the Royal Military College um on training block five. There was also issues with um some members had uh dying relatives um who had contracted COVID nineteen and were elderly. Uh, and 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 the family were advised that tho- those individuals were going to pass away. Um, the training staff had denied leave applications, uh or compassionate leave applications for those individuals to go see. Um, their dying relatives despite the fact that they lived approximately twenty to thirty minutes away from the base where the training was being conducted. Um, and uh I'm aware that they were only requesting half a day um off of training. Um, and at that point in the training where uh one particular leave application was denied, we were just cleaning stores. Uh, and undertaking just routine uh maintenance tasks on on property. Um, there were also other cadets who uh were injured, um broken legs, sprained ankles or sick. Uh, and the staff refused to take them to their appointments at the health centre, which is approximately three kilometres away, up quite a large hill um on Holsey Barracks. Uh, and these officer cadets were required to walk there and back, including in the rain, um just to get to their medical appointments. Um, because they didn't have a car with them on the course in order to drive there. Um, and they weren't permitted to drive any of the unit vehicles uh while on course. Um.
Thank you, witness. The details are there for the commissioners and we'll just move on in the interest of time. You then, you sent that email to a major and that major then um. Spoke with the cadets, is that right? After you sent the email, is that right?
That's correct. Um, so that major attended uh the training unit. Uh, and pulled us out of the um exercise uh that we were in in the classroom and spoke to us uh in another room. Um, and um asked for more details about the allegations, um you know, who the alleged perpetrators were when these had occurred. Occurred. Uh, and during that meeting uh with um the cadets, there was uh further issues that had been raised. Uh, incidents that uh we hadn't covered during our meeting. Um, and uh that uh that major took detailed notes um about our concerns. And I believe we spoke for for over an hour about some of the concerns that have been going on. Um, after that, one of the um officers uh from that training unit had walked in. Uh, and that conversation had ceased and then and then we returned. Uh, and that major um told us that he was going to raise these issues with the unit. Um, and then just as we were leaving that room, um that major uh said, right, I'm gonna go see another major from the training unit. And he walked across the air bridge, which took you to that major's office.
And then was there a plan of what would happen after that meeting?
Uh, I wasn't awa- at that point in time, I wasn't aware of a plan. Um, all I was aware is that this major uh was at that point in time and was going to um relay these allegations and concerns. To senior officers that they could take appropriate action.
And then you were planning to travel soon after that to to um. Royal Military College Duntrune, is that correct?
That is correct.
And then something happened to you just before you travelled, is that right?
That's correct. Um, I was helping some of the smaller cadets on the course. We had to carry all of our equipment down um to a bus. Uh, and I was helping them carry um some of their larger bags down the stairs. Uh, it was raining that morning. Um, and um while helping one of the cadets carry their belongings, um we slipped down the stairs. Uh, and I fell um onto my face uh and also bruised um my ribs. Um, I had a instant blood nose, uh and I informed um a sergeant from the training unit at the time. Um, of the injury to my nose and the fact that it wouldn't stop bleeding. Um, and uh he briefly responded to me and said, um, sounds like uh the Royal Military College is problem now, get on the bus. Um, and I wasn't given any first aid or any other medical attention for my injuries.
And you then arrive in Canberra. How were your nosebleeds then when you got there?
So my nosebleeds were continuing, so I was having approximately five to six nosebleeds a day, every day. And that included in my sleep or just while moving around. And both my eyes had then swollen as well.
And you saw a GP, is that right?
I did see a GP and it was initially diagnosed as a soft tissue injury. And I was told that it would clear up in a couple of days once the swelling had gone down and that I was fine to continue on with the course.
And then you give evidence that you felt targeted at RMCD. What gave you that impression? And Witness, please take your time and please take, have a glass of water if you like.
So a captain who was from the training unit that I'd originally come from was also on my platoon. And he appeared to be targeting me from day one with just comments. He was being incredibly blunt with me where he wasn't with other cadets. And he was frequently writing negative, I guess, course evaluation assessments on me. Or things like, we would be in a platoon harbour, which is where you all labour hide your guns to provide security to that, to the platoon and the harbour. And my nose would be profusely bleeding, so I would only have one hand on my rifle while pinching my nose. And he wrote negative evaluation assessments saying that I compromised the security of the platoon harbour because I didn't have both my hands on my firearm and other unreasonable issues like that. Or that where I'd had a blood nose, it had washed away the camouflage paint that was on my upper lip. And he had written a negative observation for that, saying that I'd compromised the security of the platoon by not being appropriately camouflaged.
And were you pulled off the course?
I was frequently taken off the course due to my nosebleeds. So the medics, and at that time I believe they were contracted medics for that course, were concerned about the frequency of my nosebleeds and also the fact that the swelling to my eyes wasn't going down at all.
And you refer in your evidence to a fact find that occurred, was to occur regarding toxic culture?
That's correct, so while we were at
This is at, at the regiment you were at, and we won't say what regiment, but the regiment that was at when you were doing Training Block Four, is that right?
Sure, yes, it is, so while we were at Royal Military College, a Colonel came to speak with us and stated that he had been assigned to conduct a fact finding into an alleged toxic culture at the original training unit where Training Block Four had been conducted. And asked, or stated to the course that he'd be in contact to seek information from us. And that Colonel apologised for the way that we had been treated and handed out a number of his business cards to various cadets on the course for them to distribute his details around.
And what happened at the completion of that course?
So the completion of the course, or just prior to the completion of the course, I was diagnosed that I had two fractures to my nose, which was the cause of my nose bleeding. I was informed that I couldn't be assessed on, I believe it was demonstrate army leadership and therefore could not pass my officer training, despite passing all of the practical assessments and other assessments on the course. So demonstrate army leadership, which was a summative assessment, didn't have any specific assessment elements. It was more just a holistic observation of an individual and whether they demonstrated leadership qualities of an officer. And it was stated that I couldn't be assessed on it due to my injuries. And I then proceeded to a special board of studies where I was informed that I would not be graduating as I'd been sick too much.
And did you want to say anything about the fact find at this point?
So that fact finding, I was conducted, so I was contacted by email by the Colonel, who was the individual conducting the fact find. And he sent an email out to some of the other cadets and myself with some very closed questions, very specific questions. And that was the entirety of any interaction that I really had with him in terms of giving him information for the fact find. And I'm aware from speaking to the other cadets who were on my course that everyone else received the same email from him. There were no interviews conducted during that fact find, to my knowledge, with any of the cadets about what had occurred. And then that was the last that I had heard in relation to his, from him in relation to that fact find.
And is it the case you were removed from your cohort and then you sat in what you refer to transition accommodation?
That's correct, so transit accommodation on an army base is temporary accommodation for people who are attending for short periods for courses. So I was moved into the transit accommodation lines away from the rest of my course, where I was in a room by myself for those days.
And then you return to Holsworthy. And can you tell the commissioners how your peers treated you when you returned to Holsworthy?
So I was on the same bus from Canberra to Holsworthy with my peers and was completely fine. A lot of them were stating that they were shocked and upset about how I'd been treated. And my peers hadn't treated me any differently at that point. We returned to Holsworthy and the following day, they had to go attend a workshop with a senior commissioned officer from the unit that had conducted Training Block Four. And that officer had informed them that I was delusional and was trying to harm the reputation of another senior commissioned officer. And he ordered them not to speak to me or engage with me at all.
And is that what happened?
Some of the cadets defied his order and continued to speak to me, including to tell me what had occurred. But a large portion of them were scared about repercussions with disobeying an order and ceased all communication with me.
And did you remain at that regiment?
I didn't attend that regiment again. During my time at the regiment, I was posted to a higher formation headquarters element. And my commands and control returned to that higher formation headquarters element because they deemed it to be inappropriate that I continued to be managed by that regiment.
And were you pleased about that move?
At the time, I recall being somewhat relieved. I believed that this, the other higher formation headquarters wouldn't treat me in the same way I was being treated by the regiment where the training had occurred. So I was relieved at that point in time for a short period, yes.
And then what happened whilst you were working at that headquarters?
So initially, I wasn't working per se at the headquarters. I was left in my room on base for approximately five to six weeks, during which time I was told that I shouldn't leave the base due to COVID concerns at that time. And I wasn't meaningfully employed in any way, I was just told to stay in my room on base. There was some issues around who was going to manage me. And the formation headquarters had essentially given command and control of me to a subordinate formation headquarters under them. And the Colonel who conducted the fact finding then became my, I guess, officer in charge at that point in time. I had requested on numerous occasions to not be left in my room on base because it was becoming quite isolating. My room on base was a small studio-type apartment with a small open bedroom and kitchen area and one en suite. And I hadn't really interacted with anyone in quite some time because a lot of my peers that were on the course had already flown out to their new postings. So I was essentially isolated where I was. Those requests were largely ignored. And I raised some issues and some concerns about the fact that the individual who had conducted the fact finding was supposed to be impartial, was now in charge of me. And also some concerns about how I was being managed. My posted formation headquarters then resumed command and control of me. And then I was told to come work at Bramwood Barracks where the divisional headquarters was. And I was employed there for a short period of time.
Can you recall whether anybody else was in isolation for that long?
No one else was in isolation during that period or had been in isolation during the course for any period close to that.
And can you recall how your mental health was during that time?
I felt quite isolated, it was quite frustrating me and quite upsetting as well that all of this had happened to me. I had a lot of support, a lot of my former officer commandings or commanding officers or regimental majors from previous units had been in contact with me and had been very supportive. And in fact, one major from the unit or the divisional headquarters that I was posted to had been incredibly supportive of me and would speak to me on the phone. But other than that, I received no welfare checks, no one from the formation that was supposed to be managing me had ever come and seen me. I was given a support officer at that time and that support officer was a major. And he told me that he was a puppet, and that was his words, for the Colonel. And that while he was my support officer, he wasn't allowed to do anything for me unless the Colonel had stated that was to occur. So that was quite upsetting. And I also was consuming more alcohol than what I would normally consume during that period.
Did you ever have an issue with alcohol before this?
I've never had an issue with alcohol and I haven't had, I haven't had anywhere near the volume of alcohol I was having during that period. I think it was, one, the frustration that I was experiencing and the isolation, but also the boredom that came from sitting in a very small room all day by myself. But no, I've never had an issue with alcohol.
And would you describe yourself as someone who likes to stay active, both physically and mentally?
Yes, I undertake regular physical exercise and particularly at this point in time, I was, well, prior to this, I was undertaking daily physical exercise.
And then you give some evidence about a public interest disclosure.
That's correct.
And that's at paragraph ninety-one. Can you tell the commissioners just briefly about that public interest disclosure?
Yes, so while I was working at the divisional headquarters, observed sort of, I became aware of some of the process that had followed from the fact find conducted by the Colonel and about other matters in relation to the management of concerns from the cadets and formed a view that, based on the information that I was aware of, that it was possible that the concerns weren't being appropriately managed and that cadets weren't being provided with support. Fearing further reprisal if I raised concerns again, myself and a major worked on compiling a public interest disclosure which compiled numerous complaints and it used the provisions of the PID Act in relation to disclosures to a superior. And they were provided to the Defence Public Interest Disclosure Scheme where they were accepted as a public interest disclosure. I'm aware that the Defence Public Interest Disclosure Team referred those matters to the Inspector General of the Australian Defence Force.
And did you have any concerns about that public interest disclosure process?
No, I didn't, the submission to them was quite detailed and had a lot of enclosed documents. Communication with them at that point in time was a little difficult. They weren't incredibly responsive. And there wasn't much update on what was occurring during the process. But at that point in time, I didn't have any concerns with making the public interest disclosure.
Excuse me, commissioners. And Witness, what happened during your time then at the headquarters?
So while I was at the headquarters, I undertook a number of tasks with a major who was my, essentially, the person that was in charge of me at this division headquarters. And then his superior then stated that he didn't want me working there anymore because at that point in time, this matter was becoming, I guess, more visible and public. And there were external individuals with a media presence who were starting to raise them in forums. And it was therefore becoming a sensitive issue and that he didn't want me to be around the headquarters element anymore. And he directed the major who was managing me to tell me to cease coming, to cease working.
And so was that a loss of support for you?
It was, meaningful activity was a good way of dealing with what had occurred. And also was appropriate, given I was being paid, to be engaged in some work. And then to essentially return to my room on base again without any meaningful employment was quite disheartening.
And did you make any complaints about that?
I did through my legal representative to Army Headquarters. There was correspondence that was sent about, I guess, the inappropriateness of my management by Army at that time.
And what happened as a result of those complaints, anything?
Not for the initial, for the initial period, not particularly too much happened. After that, I was given employment at a brigade headquarters, initially just doing minor tasks for the first few days. While I was at the brigade headquarters, they then started getting me to do further, more complex tasks, including assisting with multimillion-dollar procurement projects and developing new capabilities, including advanced planning and developing policies and procedures for them. I also assisted a bit with incident management and provided advice to various senior officers within that brigade headquarters during my time there.
And was there any COMCARE investigation over this period?
I'm aware through discussions with officers that I was speaking to at that time that COMCARE had become aware of the allegations at the training regiment through media reporting and had therefore launched an investigation into potential psychological abuse that was occurring at the training regiment. I didn't have any communication from COMCARE directly. But while I was working at the divisional headquarters, I was aware that they had issued a notice on Army to provide documents and records to them.
And is there anything else you want to say about Army's response regarding COMCARE? That's within your knowledge and understanding? And there may not be, Witness, I'm just giving you an opportunity if you wanted to say anything more on that.
Sure, I was made aware while I was working at the divisional headquarters that Army's response to the notice provided by COMCARE may not have been complete and it may have omitted complaints by some of the cadets into some of the more serious allegations that were raised by other cadets. And a major at that divisional headquarters raised concerns about the omission of documents with a Colonel who was acting in a director position at that divisional headquarters. And that Colonel told that major to drop it and to cease speaking about it. Uh, and that Colonel told that major to drop it and to cease uh speaking about it. Um, that major then advised me that uh he advised com care that Army may be deliberately omitting documents from the notice response. Um, and then I'm aware uh that com care then went back to Army and and made specific requests for those documents.
Thank you. And returning to the public interest disclosure, at paragraph one hundred and fourteen, which is titled unlawful public interest disclosure, can you tell the Commissioners what happened?
Um, yes, so uh the major at the division headquarters advised uh me um that and he sent an email, I I received the email as well, that he had sent out to all the individuals who had made uh public interest disclosures to him as a superior. Uh, and one of the individuals who received that email um forwarded the email to the respondents of some of those disclosures. Um, and uh an individual told me that um the Training Regiment had uh quote pulled strings uh to get um him that posting. Um, it it's unusual for a newly commissioned officer to receive a posting uh to a unit such as um the unit uh that he was posted to. Um, and uh he subsequently uh was given that posting to that regiment uh after um that had occurred. So um I was incredibly concerned um that this email had been provided um to the respondents and from there had then been provided up the chain of command uh and was being used by um some officers in those uh formation headquarters and um also uh by um officers within the Chief of Army's office.
And your words in your statement are that you were shocked and deeply concerned, is that correct?
That is correct.
And what shocked you and what deeply concerned you?
Um, I was concerned uh because I was aware that section twenty of the Public Interest Disclosure Act prohibits the disclosure of identifying information uh relating to a public interest disclosure. Um, and it also uh creates an offence for the use of that information. Um, and I was concerned that Army were uh disclosing, going continuing to disclose that information and also using that information for their own processes. Um, and that um that the Defence Public Interest Disclosure Team uh weren't taking action to cease uh that conduct by members within Army.
Thank you. And was there another fact find commenced?
Um, there wasn't a fact find in relation to the public interest disclosure. Um, there was another fact finds uh commenced prior to the one conducted by the Colonel who came to speak to us at Royal Military College. Um, and I only became aware of that first fact find, uh if we refer to it as as fact find one. Um, I only became aware of fact find one when I commenced working at the divisional headquarters. Um, and I became aware that that fact find uh recommended, uh and then that was produced by Lieutenant Colonel, recommended that uh because the allegations were so serious that they wanted independent review by an external body. Um, and I became aware that that recommendation was rejected um by a a very senior um commander within the Army.
So did that fact find go anywhere?
Uh, I I'm unsure whether that fact find went anywhere.
Thank you. And did you complete a record of conversation as part of that at all, that you can recall?
Um, I didn't complete a record of conversation as part of any of the fact find processes, no.
And then you submit in two thousand and twenty-one a redress of grievance and it's commonly referred to as rog, is that correct?
That is correct.
What did that rog relate to?
Um, so that rog, uh rog one related to um the procedurally unfair treatment of me um during Training Block Four where I was removed from course. Um, and also um the alleged reprisal against me and the impact that that had on my training uh in the um Officer Training Continuum.
And what happened after you submitted your rog?
Um, so at the time I submitted that, I was at the military college, um and it was submitted to the commanding officer of the Royal Military College. Um, that redress of grievance contained information about uh examples of unacceptable behaviour and also the procedurally unfair decision. Um, I'm aware that uh I I'm not aware of exactly who forwarded it, but an individual from the military college forwarded it to the officer who made the decision to remove me from the course. Um, and uh from there, um I believe it was sent up to the next uh formation level headquarters to deal with. Um, but the the units that um I guess the redress of grievance related to and the person that it related to received the copy of of my rog one.
And did the I G A D F receive your rog within fourteen days, to your knowledge?
Um, no, not to my knowledge. Um, I was contacted by a Lieutenant Colonel at a Brigade Headquarters who stated that he had been assigned to be the commanding officer for the purposes of the um redress of grievance. Um, he uh didn't particularly ask me many questions, uh and then uh later issued a rog determination um to me via email. Um, and um had described me, uh he was on the phone to a major. Um, a major at the divisional headquarters I was working and I could hear that phone conversation. Um, and he described uh myself and my legal representative as serial complainers and whingers. Um, so and then subsequently issued that um rog determination. Uh, my legal representative uh was concerned about the way that my rog was being managed in being that it hadn't been notified to I G A D F. Um, and uh my um s- my legal representative then contacted a Major General um who was a head of a capability within the Australian Defence Force, um who then referred the matter um to the I G A D F who stated that they were unaware that my rog had even existed. Um, my rog hadn't been entered on com track, which is a system used by Defence to record redress of grievances. Um, and it hadn't been sent to the um Directorate of Military Redress and Reviews email address um as was the appropriate process to occur.
Have you ever received an outcome on what you call rog one?
Um, late last week, I received a brief minute uh from the Director of Inquiries and Investigations, I believe, at I G A D F, who advised me of the outcomes of an inquiry conducted by the Inspector General's office into the issues at that Training Regiment. Um, and there is a small line um down the end of that document that states, this concludes the I G A D F's consideration of your uh redress of grievance, um but it doesn't provide any explanation or substantiation to that redress of grievance uh and the um the claims that were made in it.
Did you have any contact with the I G A D F at this stage?
Um, no.
That rog, that first process.
Um, I would receive uh emails approximately once every two months, sometimes longer, um from the I G A D F. Um, they appeared to be a templated email and by that I mean the language and the wording used in every email I received was the same. Um, it didn't provide me with any, um I guess, real meaningful update on where the redress of grievance was at. Um, I had had a uh a couple of conversations um with an Assistant Inspector General um who worked in that area um of the I G A D F uh who informed me that the I G A D F had determined that consideration of my rog would be suspended until such time as the inquiry had finished. Um, and uh that was really the the last of the communication of of a meaningful update that I received from I G A D F.
And do you know what the person's position in the I G A D F was? Witness, you then moved headquarters and you, is that correct? You then moved headquarters and then you became aware that in two thousand and twenty-one, the Inspector General of the A D F had determined that a broader inquiry into the allegations of unacceptable behaviour at the regiment that you were at during, when you were doing Training Block, Training Block Four, is that correct?
Um, yes, I was aware that the Chief of Army's Office had referred the allegations of unacceptable or alleged unacceptable behaviour at the Training Regiment um to the Inspector General's office to determine whether a broader inquiry was wanted. Um, and I'm aware that the I G A D F made a determination that such a broader inquiry would be wanted.
And did you receive better treatment at this new headquarters? Were you getting some more support?
Um, I received fantastic treatment at the new headquarters. Um, the senior officers who were at um that headquarters were very supportive. Um, they had their own concerns about my treatment and I'm aware that um one of um more senior officers at that formation headquarters raised numerous concerns with um not only the formation that I was posted to, but also with the Chief of Army's Office um in relation to um some of the the matters that were occurring to me. Um, they were also very supportive of of anything I needed. Um, and while um no one at that uh headquarters element was assigned to be my support officer, um uh most of the officers there were acting as a support officer in some way, shape or form um to me, whether it be they would take me up for coffee to check in on how I'm going or they would just come in the morning to see how things were. So they were incredibly supportive um uh headquarters element.
Thank you. And you were provided with the directions for the inquiry by the I G A D F, is that correct?
That's correct.
And Operator, please display privately paragraph one hundred and thirty-four. Commissioners, they are the directions that the Witness has provided. Did you have any concerns about those directions?
I did not.
At paragraph one hundred and thirty-five, Witness, you you say immediately had concerns with aspects of the matter not being investigated. So did you have any concerns about the directions?
Sorry, um I was reading the wrong section of of my statement. Um, I had concerns that the directions were quite broad um and that I hadn't been provided with a um terms of reference um in relation to the specific allegations that had been made. Um, there were also um uh some of the allegations made by cadets um were relating to incidents which could have amounted to a finding of maladministration. Um, and there was no inclusion within the directions to um the uh inquiry officers um to investigate uh potential um issues of maladministration within the unit.
And were you interviewed as part of this inquiry?
I was interviewed. Um, I was in hotel quarantine um at that point in time. Um, and I had a telephone interview uh with um two inquiry officers. Um, and uh they provided copies of their instruments of appointment as an inquiry officer to me by email.
And what has happened since that interview?
Um, so that interview lasted for approximately ninety minutes, um and it was very rushed. Uh, we didn't quite cover everything that had occurred, uh and I um haven't spoken to those inquiry officers uh since that time.
Have you been told about any outcome?
Um, as I stated previously, I received an outcome letter last week. Um, it doesn't, the the outcome letter I received was very brief uh and it didn't cover the matters or all of the matters that had been raised in relation to my treatment and also concerns that I had for other individuals. Um, and uh I I didn't appropriately address, I guess, my concerns to it to in a level of detail that I would have felt comfortable with.
So from two thousand and twenty-one until last week, had you had any contact or were you informed about anything to do with that inquiry?
Um, initially, uh the inquiry officers have stated that the I G A D F would provide regular updates on the status of the inquiry to all involved. There was some, uh uh once again, some templated style emails provided. Um, I believe they were supposed to be provided every calendar month from from my memory. Um, there was about two or three months where they were received and then they they were ceased. Um, so other than those templated emails, no, I did not receive any further correspondence from the I G A D F in relation to their inquiry.
Thank you, Witness. You then transferred to Queensland, is that right?
That is correct.
And you were given assurances of protections from reprisal from the headquarters and Chief of Army's Office, is that right?
That is correct.
And were you protected in any way?
Um, so I was um sent to Queensland to undertake a course and was informed that none of the staff who were involved in the matters that had occurred at the Training Regiment would be present. Um, and that no one would be informed about what had occurred to me, um so that there wasn't a potential that reprisal could occur. Um, upon arriving at um the course that I was uh due to undertake, um I noticed that one of the individuals who was a respondent to the allegations at the First Training Regiment had was now up there and he was running the course um uh in Queensland. Um, he immediately noticed me. Um, and I was then informed by um some of the other staff that he had told them about what had occurred uh at the previous regiment and that I had um been the one to start uh or to to initially raise concerns about the treatment of the regiment.
And you give evidence about being detained, is that right?
That is correct.
Can you just tell the Commissioners what happened there?
Um, so I spoke to um uh a a major who was at the divisional headquarters I was posted to and said to him that I didn't particularly feel comfortable, given I had just given um I guess, an interview to the I G A D F about um officers, including this officer who was now at the course in Queensland, and I didn't feel particularly comfortable. Um, I was also quite upset that the Chief of Army's Office had given written assurances to me that um there wouldn't be individuals from um the original Training Regiment at this course and that there were. Um, so I stated that I didn't feel comfortable to remain on the course. Um, and I would say I was stressed, but was still emotionally composed, just didn't feel comfortable being in his presence. Um, I was then, um that that major then called uh the regiment in Queensland and said I would like to remove him from the course. Um, I then returned to, I guess, like the um administration area in in this field training area. Um, and uh this officer who had been at the initial Training Regiment um told me uh that I wasn't permitted to leave the seat where I was. Um, and that um he uh had uh private trainees uh placed me under guard and under picket uh in a small fenced area uh in the in the training area. Um, and uh I was then aware from speaking to one of the other instructors on the course um that this officer had told them uh that I had uh suicidal and homicidal intent.
And did you?
No. And um while I was being detained, I'd just come out of the field area um and I had um two knives on me. At no point were they removed. Um, the officer had advised the the other instructor that I spoke to that it was the Health Centre who would ask for me to be detained. Um, and I sat there for approximately four hours um from from my memory um while I was under picket guard by these private trainees. Um, I still had my mobile phone on me at that time and I sent And I sent a text message to a major who I knew who worked at the Inspector General of Defence, so the Office for the Inspector General of the Australian Defence Force, and informed her that I was being, in my opinion, unlawfully detained.
And did that person do anything about it?
The individual who worked at the Office for the IGADF stated to me that she would see what she could do. And I believe that she, and she stated in a response text message to me that she would inform the IGADF inquiry team due to the concerns that she had in regards to the way that they were treating me. And that's what she has written in the, or words to effect of in the text message.
Did you have any further contact?
Not in relation to this matter, no.
And then an individual welfare board was arranged, is that right?
Immediately following that detention, I was taken to the Health Centre where I was, I saw a medical officer and I'd informed them about the detention of me. They had stated that at no point in time had they requested that I be detained and that they were extremely concerned about what had happened to me. And I believe that they briefed senior officers and phoned a number of individuals, both at the divisional headquarters I was at and also at Army Headquarters.
And did the individual welfare board go ahead?
So the welfare board occurred after I returned from Queensland back to Hollesbury Barracks. So the individual welfare board did go ahead. But a senior officer who was supposed to attend the welfare board refused to attend my welfare board as he had received advice from a very senior Army member that he shouldn't attend my welfare board.
Did you attend the welfare board?
I did attend the welfare board.
And then there was a unit welfare board, is that right?
Yes, later there was a unit welfare board, correct.
Did you attend that unit welfare board?
No, I did not attend the unit welfare board. And I was informed that a senior officer had my name removed during that welfare board from the agenda because I was apparently not a real member of that unit.
And then you submitted a second redress of grievance, is that right?
I submitted a second redress of grievance as I was discharging from defence. I had completed a separations form from defence and a lieutenant colonel who had been involved in the matter and I was aware that other individuals had made allegations against him had put that I wasn't suitable for Army service in my discharge paperwork, despite the fact that I had made it abundantly clear I was discharging for reprisal. I'm aware that not fit for service or not fit for retention is an administrative process that occurs in Army where an individual is deemed that they're no longer suitable or service. At no point had any negative comments been made about my performance. And quite the opposite, I had numerous reporting from various officers, including when I was posted to the Brigade Headquarters elements, that my conduct and professionalism was exceptional. And there were comments made by one major where he said to me that he wouldn't even have a lieutenant do the work that I was doing or a captain. And essentially, I was acting well outside of my rank and the level of work that I was producing. So my rog two related to that comment being made. And my legal representative also sent communication to the Chief of Army's Office in relation to that comment and the concerns around the lack of procedurally fair treatment, given that I wasn't given a right of reply before that determination was made in my separations paperwork. The Chief of Army's Office directed that that separations paperwork be revoked and rescinded because it wasn't procedurally fair. And they ordered that another officer at the divisional headquarters reissue my separations paperwork without any procedurally unfair comments, which did occur.
Commissioners, I note the time for the transcriber. We're approaching, is that correct, that we're approaching two hours?
We did start late, so I think they're content to go until you finish.
Thank you very much, Commissioners, I appreciate it. And apologies that I've gone over time.
No worries.
Thank you. Witness, did you want to say anything further there about that process?
No, other than my redress of grievance was, the grievance was the procedurally unfair comments in my separations paperwork. Army Headquarters rectified the issue in relation, they rectified the grievance by rescinding and revoking the separations paperwork and having new paperwork issued. And at that time, I spoke to a senior officer at the Directorate of Military Redress and Review at the IGADF who stated that she wished to keep the rog two in place so that it could be appropriately reviewed.
And then at, so before I ask you this question, witness, did that rog go to the IGADF?
It did. I'm aware that it went to the IGADF because it appeared on my contract and showed a reference number and that it was assigned to the IGADF.
And did you have any contact with the IGADF? Did they contact you?
I received the same templated emails as I did in rog one, but I haven't received any contact to date in relation to rog two.
And how long ago is that now?
Rog two would have been submitted in around November or December of 2021. So quite some time.
And have you received any other information about that process or where it's up to?
No, I have not.
And did you have any contact with the Defence Public Interest Disclosure Office? It's paragraph 193, witness, to assist.
Yes, I did. I had contact with the Defence Public Interest Disclosure Team where I provided a list of allegations regarding incidents I believed were reprisal against me. A pit intake officer provided me with an assessment of whether those allegations met the threshold for a public interest disclosure under the scheme. And I believe the majority of them met the threshold for the various reasons that are listed in paragraph 193. I was then contacted later on, would have been a few months later, by a lieutenant colonel who worked for the Defence Public Interest Disclosure Scheme. And he basically stated that they wouldn't continue investigating them as the IGADF was already conducting inquiry.
And you had some contact with ministers at the time? Or is that, what was the reason for that?
That was correct. So in 2021, I met with the Chief of Staff to the Minister for Defence and a senator and a senator's chief of staff in relation to the matter. The minister's office had informed my legal representative that they wanted to understand more about the matter, including the reprisal actions. And they stated that it was because they were concerned that the minister and the minister's office weren't being provided with the full and factual information from the ADF.
And have you ever discussed any of your matters with the media?
No, I have not.
And how have these events impacted on your mental health?
During the period where this was going on, I lost a considerable amount of weight. I believe it was in the area of about 16, 17 kilo, somewhere around there. And I was quite stressed a lot of the time. I had bad breakouts on my skin, had difficulty sleeping, had the increased alcohol consumption and was very, I guess, disturbed and upset with what had occurred. I was also dealing with other cadets coming to me, informing me about how they were feeling, which sort of, you know, affected how I was feeling as well. Having peers and colleagues tell me that they had suicidal intent or had attempted to commit suicide was quite a burden to carry at that point in time with all my own matters going on as well.
And did you ever experience any suicidal ideation or attempt suicide at all?
No, I didn't.
And what do you think acted as protective factors for you with respect to preventing you from experiencing suicide behaviours?
I had a lot of good social supports, both within and outside of Army, which I found quite beneficial. In particular, there were certain key officers who, despite some of them being ordered not to speak to me, continued to do so to support my welfare. And I believe without those individuals providing support to me, it would have been a very different outcome for how my mental state was affected.
Did you observe any mental health impacts on the people that you were providing support to?
I did. There were at least three cadets who told me that they had suicide attempts or had suicidal ideation. I'm aware that at least one of those cadets had two suicide attempts in relation to the trauma that he experienced at this training regiment. I'm aware of another cadet that had at least one suicide attempt in relation to the trauma that he experienced at the regiment. One of those cadets has since been discharged and he's informed me that it was for psychological reasons due to the trauma that he's experienced during his officer training. And other cadets told me that they were shaken up for quite some time or that they would never look at Army again the same way. Some people discharged from Defence altogether. And these were people that were frequently targeted as well. They just decided to leave the Australian Defence Force.
And then you say in your statement that you weren't aware of any offer of counselling or mental health support being made to anyone in the ADF or to your peers?
That's correct. They were, these were largely new trainees to the Defence. As I said earlier, a lot of them were between 18 to 20 years of age. And this was their first real experience leaving home after finishing high school. There was a lot of traumatic experiences and they were now going through the process of being involved in an IGADF inquiry and the fact finds, as well as dealing with what had occurred to them. A number of the cadets raised concerns that they hadn't been provided with a support person or hadn't been given any information on how to access a support person. I was aware that there was one cadet who was particularly struggling with not having any support. And she only received support after her mother wrote a ministerial complaint to the then Minister for Defence.
And have you since been discharged from the Army?
Yes, the Army expedited my discharge, which was at my request because I believe that while I remained a member, I'd be subject to reprisal.
You were saying that you decided to leave the Army because of fear of further reprisal, is that right?
That's correct. And I returned to my home location and received support from officers that were involved in my transition out of Defence who I'd previously known from other time and postings in Defence. And yeah, I applied and I stated in my discharge paperwork the reasons why and that was because of the reprisal that was occurring against me.
And on your discharge form, what is the reason that's written on your discharge papers?
To summarise it, basically, I've been subject to ongoing reprisal and harassment in relation to raising concerns about unacceptable behaviour and potential criminal offences that I've observed in Army and that Army weren't taking any steps, in my opinion, to protect me from ongoing reprisal.
But is there anything on there that says medical discharge or involuntary discharge or?
No, my discharge was voluntary and at my will. I made it clear, so my legal representative at the time made it clear that I was discharging under the duress of active reprisal that was occurring to me. But it was the only way that I saw to try to have what was occurring to me cease was to leave the Army altogether.
And do you have any, excuse me, do you have any views on the objectiveness of the complaint processes that you've been through?
I do. My concerns, I guess, with the IGADF specifically are, I guess, the impartiality of the Inspector General's office. The Assistant Inspector Generals who conduct inquiries are uniformed members of the Defence Force who are on short-term postings of two to three years generally with the IGADF. And after their time at the IGAF, they will turn back to their service where they'll be posted or possibly subsequently promoted after that. I believe it's difficult for them to make adverse findings, particularly against senior commanders, which may then adversely affect their own career prospects and development after they leave Inspector General's office. I also believe that the fact that the Inspector General himself is a former Defence member and therefore will have relationships still within Defence also compromise the integrity. So I guess, for me, a large part of the independence and of those processes relates to the people who are conducting them and what their own, I guess, interests or relationships may be that affect those processes.
And do you have any comments that you want to make about your views or perceptions of the rog system? For example, did you feel that it was fair and equitable in terms of the responses that you received or the process that you went through?
I found the communication to be lacking in terms of where the redress of grievances were at, what the IGAF was doing to consider it. The IGAF, and I guess the fundamental principle of a redress of grievances is to uphold military justice. And a key principle of justice is timely justice. And having a redress of grievances pending in excess of 850 days doesn't provide timely justice to a matter. It also leaves a sense and feeling of a void of knowing what's coming or that anyone's actually taking your concerns seriously. And for me, I mean, I've discharged from Defence now. So, you know, the meaningfulness, although any meaningful outcome as a result of my rog is now gone because it can't be rectified. The grievance can no longer be redressed. But still waiting in excess of 850 days seems very inappropriate and it fails to uphold the principles that the IGAF should be upholding in relation to military justice.
Thank you, witness. And did you want to make any other final comments about the administrative processes that you were involved in? And do you have any recommendations that you would like to make to the Commission?
I believe that the Inspector General's office would be best served if it was more independent from Defence by possible legislative amendments to both the Defence Act and the IGADF regulations in regards to the appointments of Assistant Inspector Generals. I believe that a more civilian-run agency, similar to the setups of the IGUS and other Inspector Generals, would be beneficial for Defence in removing any actual or perceived conflicts of interest by individuals charged to undertake inquiries and their connection to their relevant service. I also believe that there should be legislative timeframes on redress of grievances so that the principle of timely justice is applied to members who file redress of grievances with the Inspector General's office.
Thank you, witness. Commissioners, I have no further questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown.
Thank you very much. In the interest of time, I'll just ask one question. How would you describe, from your experience, how would you describe the culture of the Defence Force?
Prior to going to the training regiment, the culture that I had observed was always to a very high standard. I hadn't observed a great deal of unacceptable behaviour within Defence. The culture at this training regiment was particularly toxic and inappropriate. But I wouldn't say it was reflective of the larger organisational structure that I saw within Army. The management of this matter, though, did, or does cast doubt for me over the management of matters and perhaps the culture of some senior commanders within Defence who I believe on occasions lacked the moral courage to take appropriate actions where they were required.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Douglas.
Thank you, Commissioner Douglas.
Do you know whether anything significant has happened to the training staff at the Training Regiment you're talking about?
I do not. The update I was given from the Inspector General's office a week ago, while brief, stated that the copy of their inquiry would be given to the Deputy Chief of Army. And there was no outcomes listed in that letter that was given to me.
Apropos of your suggestion about the independence of the IGADF, it's been suggested to me a while ago now that it could be useful to have, for example, police seconded to it who had Army Reserve experience because of the usefulness of knowing what's happened in the Army. Do you have any comment on that?
I believe that would potentially be beneficial. A large number of government departments use investigators who can undertake investigations but don't necessarily have to have been former Defence members. I believe that would be beneficial or even in the absence of that, like Defence Liaison Officers, to provide context to inquiry officers in undertaking inquiries. But I do believe that it would be beneficial for a non-Defence member to be conducting inquiries for the Inspector General's office, whether that's a police officer or a former Defence member, just as long as they're not an active Defence member at that time.
Thanks.
I just have two quick issues. Thank you, Witness. So in relation to the redress of grievance, there's essentially two. Did you ever at any point get a resolution to the first one?
To the first one, there was that brief mention in the letter I received last week, which simply states this completes the IGADF's consideration of your rog being rog one. But it didn't actually address the contents of my rog. It was just the summary of the findings as they related to me from the IGADF inquiry into the regiment.
And in relation to public interest disclosures, transgressions, I know they said they're not going to do it or look at it because the matter has been looked at by the Inspector General. Did anything after that happen?
No, there was a lack of action. In the letter I received from the IGADF, it said that they determined that there was unacceptable behaviour towards me by the officer who ordered my peers not to speak to me and made derogatory comments about me. That officer only became aware that I had made these complaints because of my redress of grievance. The Defence Regulations prescribe an offence victimising someone who submitted a rog, which is simply what the IGUS concluded, but that...
I appreciate that. But just in relation to the public interest disclosures, transgressions, which are actually illegal. What happened, from your description, is actually illegal. Was there a result in relation to that?
No, not in relation to the reprisal as it relates to the public interest disclosures, no.
Thank you. Mr. O'Driscoll, anything you want to bring up?
Just one question, Commissioner.
Please go ahead.
Witness, I'll take you to paragraph one hundred and sixteen of your statement. You're contacted by a Lieutenant Colonel in relation to a fact find about unauthorised actions by a Major. Is that right?
That's correct.
And what do you understand that fact find to be about?
So that fact find was about actions by that Major which related to the compiling and submission of a public interest disclosure.
And what was your view as to why that fact find was being conducted?
I wasn't given a formal reason by that Lieutenant Colonel. But I did have concerns about the fact that it was occurring, the fact that I was being essentially ordered to provide information as to what my knowledge was of the actions, what was occurring, what was included, et cetera, as part of that fact find. But I wasn't provided with a formal reason.
Thank you. No further questions.
Any matters arising? I understood he was a lived experience witness.
No, he's not a lived experience witness. So I don't know, a friend might have some questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fordham.
For reasons set out in correspondence, the Commonwealth is not in a position to consider cross-examination.
Thank you, that'll be noted. Ms. Bridget?
Just one matter arising. On the questions that your legal representative just asked you regarding that, when you said that you were concerned that you were being asked to disclose information, why were you concerned about being asked to disclose information about the PID?
So I'm aware that the Public Interest Disclosure Act has provisions which require confidentiality of public interest disclosures. I was concerned that if the individuals who had provided disclosures to a superior were named, they may be the victim of reprisal. And I was also concerned about potentially committing a criminal offence under the Act myself if I disclosed any of that information to the Lieutenant Colonel.
Thank you. I have no further questions, Commissioners.
Thank you. And the witness is to be excused, I gather? Witness, thank you for your evidence today. Thank you for courage. Thank you for standing up and speaking with us. It is very, very helpful, your excuse for a miss Summers to appear today. If there's no other matters, we'll adjourn for morning tea.
All rise. The Royal Commission into Defence on Veterans Suicide will adjourn. The Royal Commission into Defence on Veterans Suicide is now resumed. Please be seated.
Raffael, Miss Longborough?
Good afternoon, Commissioner Cowdys. The final session this afternoon will comprise evidence from Mr. Andrew Snatchell, PSM. Mr. Snatchell is the Director of the Military Redress and Review Directorate within the Office of the IGADF. That Directorate has oversight of the Redress of Grievance Complaint Process, that is colloquially known as ROG. Such complaints relate to a decision, act or omission that relates specifically to a member's service within the Defence Force. Historically, redress of grievance complaints have been dealt with by the chain of command. But following the introduction of the Defence Regulation 2016, IGADF has had oversight of that process. IGADF has provided the Royal Commission with information about the number and character of redress of grievance complaints that they have received in each financial year from 2017, 2018 until 2020, 2021. Those figures indicate that between two hundred and sixty-nine and three hundred and ninety-two redress of grievance complaints are received each financial year and that the biggest single category of those complaints concerns termination of service, including under section twenty-four-one C. We will be exploring with Mr. Snatchell the structure, process and practice of the oversight the Office of the IGADF gives to decision-making in relation to redress of grievance complaints. The purpose of that examination will be to ascertain the extent to which the system provides a safeguard for members in relation to complaints about decisions that are likely, at least in some instances, to cause them acute stress. I call Mr. Snatchell.
Do you, Andrew Snatchell, swear by Almighty God that the evidence you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Thank you.
Can the operator please display the tender list? Commissioners, I tender the documents identified in the tender bundle in the manner in which they are described in the list.
It's one page?
No, it should be more than one page. Commissioner, can I ask that each page please be identified or displayed?
Thank you. They'll be accepted into evidence then on that basis and allocated the next lot of numbers. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Cowdys. Mr. Snatchell, you are the Director of the Military Redress and Review Directorate within the Office of the IGADF?
I am.
That Directorate has oversight of the Redress of Grievance Complaint Process?
Yes.
Am I correct that you commenced as Director of that Directorate in about 2014?
Yes, I did.
And your background is in the Australian public service as well as in the civilian sector?
Yes.
But you don't have any specific military experience?
No.
Mr. Snatchell, I want to start by asking you to give Commissioners an overview of the redress of grievance as a concept, but also in terms of its process. Am I right to understand that a redress of grievance is, in effect, a process for considering certain types of complaints submitted by a serving member of the Australian Defence Force?
Yes, that's correct.
But the redress of grievance process doesn't capture every type of complaint? And if I can illustrate that by way of example, it is specifically directed to a decision, act or omission in relation to a member's service that the member considers is adverse or detrimental to him or her?
Yes.
So, for example, a redress of grievance complaint couldn't be made in relation to unacceptable behaviour?
There could be a complaint in relation to unacceptable behaviour because a member could complain in a redress of grievance about the way that they were treated, an act that occurred. But under Defence policy, that complaint would ordinarily be considered through the complaint mechanism of the unacceptable behaviour policy first.
And so just to explore that, so for example, a rog complaint could be made in relation to a decision made in the course of a fact-finding process or an administrative decision about a complaint of unacceptable behaviour?
Yes.
And that's where the line between what is a rog complaint and what is otherwise a complaint sits? Have I understood that correctly?
I think it's nuanced more with Defence policy that they would both be complaints that would be amenable to a redress of grievance. But as a matter of policy, the original incident complained of would be dealt with at the lowest appropriate level through some administrative consideration. And if the person was dissatisfied with the outcome of that, then they could submit a redress of grievance complaint.
And when you're talking about Defence policy, you're talking specifically there about CAM?
Yes, I think chapter three, top of my head.
And so the distinction that I understand you're drawing is between the initiation of a complaint, which would be dealt with within Defence, and then a complaint about the outcome of that initial complaint consideration process, which might be amenable to a redress of grievance complaint?
I'm sorry, I'm just being technical with amenable. I think it would be amenable. But if a complaint of unacceptable behaviour were submitted at first instance as a redress of grievance, unless there was a reason not to, probably a discretion in section forty-six would be exercised to not consider it as a redress of grievance complaint but allow it to be considered through the appropriate lower-level Defence policy.
And then once it was considered through the lower level of Defence policy, if the member was still dissatisfied with the decision-making, then they would make a redress of grievance complaint?
Yes.
Okay. What about, for example, a posting decision? Could that be amenable to a redress of grievance complaint?
Yes.
Now, as I understand it, Mr. Snatchell, the expression redress of grievance is, in effect, an historical relic. It refers to the right of a member of the military to complain to their chain of command about a decision that affected their service? Have I understood that correctly?
Yes.
And part of your role in the Office of the IGADF has been to implement a reformed redress of grievance process under the Defence Regulation 2016?
Yes.
And that was work for which you received recognition by way of a Public Service Medal?
Yes, it was.
Now, the reforms that are reflected in the 2016 Defence Regulation were, as I understand it, prompted by a review commissioned by the Chief of the Defence Force and Secretary of Defence in 2011, that's called the Rethinking Systems of Inquiry, Investigation, Review and Audit in Defence?
Yes.
Are you familiar with that review?
Not overly.
But you are aware of the fact that it was that review, and this appears in the explanatory note to the 2016 Defence Regulation. It was that review that prompted the statutory reform of the system of redress of grievance?
Yes, it did.
Now, accepting that you are not minutely familiar with the review itself, can I suggest to you that it found that the redress of grievance process before 2016 was extensive and drawn out?
Yes.
And would you accept that's a fair characterisation of the system before 2016?
It certainly had the potential to and was extensive and drawn out in many cases, yes.
And would you accept that the time taken in resolving a redress of grievance complaint can be a source of stress for complainants?
Yes.
Now, the Rethinking Systems review also found that credible and robust external review is essential for Defence to learn from errors and to be accountable for decisions. Would you accept that those concepts of a robust external review is a necessary mechanism to ensure that Defence is accountable for the decisions it makes about matters affecting member's service? You can put it another way, if that's easier.
I'm just unsure as to the context of external review, sorry?
Well, for example, through a body such as your own, such as the OIGDF.
Yes, sorry, could you repeat the question with that context?
Would you accept that in order for Defence to learn from its errors and to be accountable for its decisions, it's essential that there exists a credible and robust external mechanism of review?
Yes.
And that it is important to have a credible and robust external review also as a safeguard for members?
Yes.
Now, as we touched upon before, the 2016 regulations gave effect to that review. In terms of the restructured system, as we spoke about before, historically, a redress of grievance complaint was made within the chain of command. Am I right to understand that?
Under the old system, it was as well as the new system, yes.
But we might call, we might just conveniently refer to the pre-2016 system as the old system and the post-2016 system as the new system. Under the new system, a member's commanding officer or what's called an authorised complaint recipient can still receive the redress of grievance complaint?
Yes.
But what the new system introduces is the requirement that the IGADF consider the complaint by a member unless particular exclusionary circumstances apply, which are identified under the regulation.
Yes.
Now, you would accept that the intent of the 2016 regulations were to introduce a quicker mechanism for a formal review of redress of grievance complaints?
Yes.
It was also to ensure that the process was more independent?
Yes.
And to ensure that the process protected Defence members by giving the IGADF an opportunity to consider all complaints and make recommendations on their resolution?
Yes.
And would you accept that the value of a complaint system such as the redress of grievance process tends to be directly related to users' perception about it providing a fair and equitable response to their complaint?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Let me put it this way. If a member doesn't feel that their complaint is taken seriously or that the complaint system is simply a mechanism to support command, that's likely to add to any disillusionment or disenchantment a user might feel.
Yes, that would certainly be... Sorry, yes, I accept that.
And so accepting that to be the case, the value of a redress of grievance complaint system tends to be directly related to users', that is, members' perception, about whether or not it provides a fair and equitable response to their complaint?
I think that's one aspect. I think there's also a matter of reality as to whether it does objectively as well as subjectively.
So you're really making an additional comment. You accept that subjective perception is important?
Yes.
But your additional comment is that there's an objective analysis to be had as well?
Yes.
And in terms of a measure of objective analysis, as I understand it, the next point of review after a redress of grievance is a complaint to the Commonwealth Ombudsman? Am I right to understand that?
That's certainly one avenue, yes.
So that might be one metric, both in terms of the number of complaints, but also the outcome of those complaints to have that objective assessment as well?
Yes.
Now, just talking about the old system, would it be fair to say... I'll take a step back. To what extent did you have any knowledge or oversight of the old system?
In my previous role, I was responsible for discretionary compensation mechanisms within defence, so the Scheme for Compensation for Detriment Caused by Defective Administration, Act of Grace Payments, Debt Waiver Requests, Claims for Payment under the Public Service Act, which would not be relevant here, sorry. I... Claims of those nature were occasionally submitted as the result of a redress of grievance, sometimes at the recommendation of the decision-maker and sometimes at the instigation purely of the member.
Accepting that you have that level of sort of oversight of the old system?
Sorry, may I can... Sorry, one other aspect. When I started in the Office of IGADF, that system was still in operation. So from around May 2014, when I started in IGADF, the Office of the Inspector General had responsibility for administering that old system. In doing that, the Office effectively conducted the inquiry on behalf of the Service Chief and CDF at those levels within the old system.
So when you say conducted the inquiry, are you talking about the inquiry in relation to individual redress of grievance complaints?
Yes, those matters that were referred to Service Chiefs and CDF under the old system.
And did the IGADF have any involvement in the... in recommendations about what the new system might look like under the regulation?
We had some input into it. From memory, it was fairly late in the piece.
And were you involved in that input?
Very late, yes.
And can you explain to Commissioners what that input was?
Pardon me. Commenting on... It's a long time ago. Commenting on draft regulation, looking at how the regulation could provide a practical, workable complaint solution. There was, I recall at the time, a strong desire to retain command ability to deal with complaints at the first instance.
Can I just stop you there? When you say there was a strong... I think you said a strong...
Desire.
Desire, on whose part?
I couldn't say where in the Defence Force that was, whether it was in the department or the ADF.
But one of the two?
Certainly one of the two.
Go on.
We had views within the Office as to the desirability of that as well. The Chief of Services Committee that made the decision to pass redress of grievance responsibility to the Office of the Inspector General made the decision with, from memory, the corollary that there would be no additional resources provided beyond that which was provided to the Defence People Group when they were managing the redress of grievance process?
So can I stop you there again? Putting to one side the question of resourcing to have oversight of that process. As at the time of discussion about this new regime, what was the officer's perspective about the desirability of having oversight of that system?
I'm sorry, you're stretching my memory too far.
Okay. Well, you've used the expression... You've said, and correct me if I'm wrong about this, that at the time, there was an internal perspective about the desirability of that function coming to IGADF? I'm just asking you to explain what that perspective was to the best you can recall it.
To the best I recall, at my involvement, at the point in time I was involved in it, it was concerned to be focused on being able to practically deliver.
So resourcing was the principal consideration?
I think resourcing and also the structure of the legislation to ensure that it was workable.
Okay. Now, just before I move on to the new regime, to the extent to which you have knowledge on the basis of your oversight of the old system, are you aware or would you accept that there had been complaints that... or concerns expressed that the old system with respect to rogues would result in unfair treatment of individuals?
I'm sorry. What was the first part of the question? Sorry.
Okay, I'm talking about the old system. So on the basis of your oversight or understanding of the old system, are you aware that some members concerned that if they made a rog complaint, they would be treated unfairly?
Treated unfairly as a result of having made a rog complaint, is that the question? Yes.
And are you aware that under the old system, some members were concerned about, for example, possible adverse treatment if they submitted a complaint against the decision of a superior officer?
Yes.
Now, if I can move to the new system, Mr Snatchell. Do you need me to get you some water or you?
Oh, I'm fine, thanks.
Would it be fair to say that you were intimately involved in the implementation of the new system?
Yes.
And that you have overseen the day-to-day operation of the new system for almost seven years now?
Yes.
In your view, Mr Snatchell, does the new system adequately protect members?
I believe the system provides a workable solution and in circumstances where members raise concern with submitting their complaints through the redress of grievance system for the reasons you've identified, we identify with them other options of other complaint mechanisms, such as a military justice submission to the IGADF.
That wasn't my question, though. My question is, do you think the redress of grievance new system adequately protects members?
There's nothing in the system itself that... Sorry. The legislation has provisions that deal with retribution and creating an offence for retribution. So there is a protection in there if a member supers retribution for having submitted a redress of grievance complaint.
Perhaps I can put it this way. Do you think that the new redress of grievance system is flawed insofar as it concerns protection of members who make complaints?
No, I don't consider it flawed.
In your view, does the new system provide a more independent review of decisions affecting members' service?
Than the old system? Yes, I do.
Do you think it has the... I might get you to expand on that. You think it has more independence than the old system?
Yes, I do.
But accepting that one of the objects of the new regulation is to protect members by having an independent system, do you think that there is a sufficient level of external oversight provided by your Directorate in its dealing with rogues that provides that desired necessary independent review?
Yes.
Okay. Now, the Royal Commission has received a number of submissions from members, including in relation to the redress of grievance process. I just want to take you to a couple of those submissions to give you an opportunity to comment on perceptions at least of issues with the system. Operator, can you please display the submission slides and turn to page five? And I'll just give you an opportunity to read that, Mr Snatchell. But can I ask you to particularly focus on the last paragraph?
Sorry. If I'm being asked to read the whole thing, can I just have that reduced, please, so I can read the second paragraph?
Of course. Can we please expand the entire...
I'm happy with...
You're happy to read it like that?
Yes.
Mr Snatchell, you shook your head at one stage while reading that submission. Can I ask you why that was?
I think there's potentially a misunderstanding there of the six-month time limit. And I disagree with the perception of the words, if I may find them. And rarely accepts that there is an extenuating circumstance there by giving them a reason to not investigate the issue. I disagree with that.
So you're referring there to the second paragraph, I take it?
Yes.
And the second paragraph there refers to... Is that the six-month time limit to make a redress of grievance complaint other than in relation to a termination decision? Is that particularly what you're referring to?
Yes.
And you don't accept the characterisation that's put on defence in that respect?
I don't accept the characterisation or I don't accept the assertion that IGADF rarely accepts that there's an extenuating circumstance.
And you're referring there... And just to explain it to Commissioners, there is a different approach taken to termination decisions? So if a termination decision is made, a member has got 14 days to put in a redress of grievance complaint?
Yes, 14 days from the day after that they receive, yes.
And if the rog complaint is put in place outside that 14-day period, then there's no mechanism for an extension of time?
In the legislation, no.
What do you mean by that?
There've been occasions when complaints about a termination decision have been submitted outside that 14-day time limit. One example that springs to mind is where a member had been told by a senior member of their service that they could have an extension of time. I considered it would be very unfair in those circumstances to simply not do anything. And so I construed their complaint as a complaint about the advice that they'd been given, which was incorrect. I proceeded to consider the substance of their complaint as if it were a rog and formed a conclusion that despite the advice, they had not suffered any prejudice and effectively gave them a full answer to their complaint.
And so would it be fair to say that required you to take a creative approach to a construction of the rog to get around the 14-day timeframe in the legislation?
Yes.
Now, just stopping there, so then the six-month period applies to redress of grievance complaints about other types of decisions affecting a member's service? And am I right to understand, in relation to that other category of rogues, the Office of the IGADF does have a discretion to extend the time limit within which those complaints can be made?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Moving on, I just want to take you to first the proposition in the second sentence of the first paragraph, saying the rog process is time-consuming and laborious. What would be your comment on that? Do you think that's a fair characterisation of the new system?
I think any complaint system can be time-consuming and laborious depending on the type of complaint that's being submitted.
But specifically in terms of your Directorate and redress of grievance complaints under your Directorate, do you think it's a fair characterisation to say that the process is time-consuming and laborious from making a complaint to having it resolved?
I don't accept it as a complete statement, no. I simply say it depends on the individual complaint. Some complaints are resolved very quickly.
And those complaints that are resolved very quickly, would it be fair to say they tend to be the ones that the OIGDF decide to not consider or stop considering under Regulation 46?
No, I disagree.
Okay. Now, can I take you then to the third paragraph? And the second sentence in the third paragraph that asserts that the new system does not benefit the soldier but rather protects the leadership? Do you accept that as a characterisation of the new system?
No, I do not.
Why not?
Because we endeavour to give independent consideration of the members' complaints. There's no bias in protecting leadership of the ADF.
Now, can I ask the operator to please turn to page seven of those slides? And I'll just give you an opportunity, Mr Snatchell, to read that. I might just, won't take you to it, I won't ask it to be displayed again, I'll just put a proposition to you, Mr Snatchell, arising from that document.
I hadn't finished reading it.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's all right. We might just move on then. Operator, can I ask...
Sorry, counsel, did you want a non-publication on that?
Yes, if we could, please, Commissioner Brown, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So that'll be so ordered.
Operator, can you please display tender bundle document number A, which is igd.902.03? Mr Snatchell, are you familiar with this document?
I have read it, yes.
It is a background paper in response to a notice to give issued by the Royal Commission with respect to the functions of your office. Did you have any involvement in its preparation?
Not specifically. I may have received questions from people who prepared it, and they took my input.
I might then ask the operator to please turn to dot 0044 of that document. There is there set out, Mr Snatchell, an explanation of the functions of your Directorate, but also the IGADF's explanation of the redress of grievance process and its rationale. I might ask the operator to please display paragraph 4.58 and give you an opportunity to read that.
Yes.
Are you familiar with that explanation of the redress of grievance process and its rationale?
I have read it.
Does it reflect your understanding of both the process and its underlying reasoning?
That's not how I would describe it, but it's a view.
Can you explain to the commissioners your differing view in relation, any sentences in that paragraph that you disagree with and why?
I think I'd probably just use different words in the third sentence to say, the IGADF considers the complaint and takes into consideration, sorry, considers what the complaint is about, not the substance of the complaint, and considers Command's view as to how that particular complaint ought to be handled and by whom.
And so you're talking there about the sentence that starts, the IGADF works closely with COs to determine the most appropriate way of dealing with the rog?
Yes.
And so am I right to understand you to be saying you reject the characterisation that your office works closely with COs?
I'd say the IGADF, Office of the IGADF consults with COs, yes.
And why is it important, in your view, to make the distinction between consulting with COs and working closely with them?
Because I think there's a risk that those words might be construed as working closely with the COs when looking at the substance of the complaint, as opposed to the preliminary decision as to who is the most appropriate person to deal with that complaint and via what process.
It might be a good juncture then, just to make sure I'm correctly understanding what you're saying. I might just ask if the operator can display alongside this paragraph the defence regulations, just so we can step through your understanding alongside what the legislation ultimately provides. And I might just ask if the operator can please turn to Regulation 40? So I'm going to step through the mechanics aspect of the regulation or the new system with you, Mr Snatchell. So Regulation 41, 40 rather, as I understand it, provides the mechanism for a member to make a complaint?
Yes.
And the criteria is that, first of all, the complaint concern a decision, act or omission in relation to the member's service that's adverse or detrimental to him or her?
Yes.
Can you give commissioners an example of an act or omission that falls within the new system?
An omission, a reliable example of an omission is, pardon me, perhaps an omission to deal with an application that was submitted to the chain of command, perhaps an application for leave, and that leave date is approaching, and there's been an omission to actually make a decision on whether or not to approve the leave.
And what about an example of an act?
Look, it's a very broad example. Most of the things that constitute an act can also flow from or related to a decision. An act, I guess, could be doing something to another person, doing something to a member. The act could be requiring that other member to do something, which would also constitute a decision. It's very rare that we see a complaint that identifies an act. I can't actually think of one.
And so would it be fair to say that the, would it be right to say the single biggest category of redress of grievance complaint is decisions?
Yes, that's correct.
Followed by omissions?
It's very rare that we get an omission either, but occasionally.
And then Regulation 41 prescribes the manner of making the complaint, and we've touched on then the timeframes involved.
Yes.
Section, Regulation 42 and 43 speak to process. Now, I can just get you to focus back on that sentence of 4.58 you took issue with. That is the sentence saying, the IGADF works closely with COs to determine the most appropriate way of dealing with the rog. Was that comment directed to these sections that deal with process?
Yes, the referral to IGADF is not a referral of responsibility to consider the substance of complaint. It's treated as the opportunity for a decision to be made on how and who, whom, sorry, how and by whom that individual complaint ought to be considered at first instance.
And can you just point the commissioners to where that appears in those Regulations 42 and 43?
It's on the interpretation of referral.
So that is 43.1A requires referral of the complaint to the IGADF?
Yes.
And what's your interpretation of what that means?
Is referring being a notification, a formal notification, that the complaint is there, but it's not a, it's not treated as being a formal passing of responsibility to deal with the subject matter of the complaint, although we can if we want to.
And just in terms of that interpretation or understanding of Reg 43.1A, is that something that is reduced to policy or guidelines within your Directorate?
In terms of specific meaning of referral?
Yes.
I think it's referred to in the Complaints or Terms of Resolutions Manual, Chapter Six, yes.
Okay. And can I just ask, how, as I understand it, you've just said, you interpret refer to mean, referral to IGADF doesn't mean that it is IGADF's substantive responsibility to deal with the complaint? Is that, have I understood that correctly?
I would word it by saying, referral to IGADF doesn't absolve command of responsibility for dealing with a complaint, if it's within their power to do so. The regulation was intended to be flexible in that there are rare occasions when Command continue consideration of a complaint concurrently with IGADF consideration, but in the majority of matters, initial substantive consideration of the complaint is conducted by the chain of command somewhere, not necessarily within the member's unit.
So it doesn't absolve command of responsibility to deal with the redress of grievance complaint?
Not necessarily, no.
But would you accept that IGADF does assume an independent responsibility in relation to that redress of grievance complaint?
I think that's the point at which we're starting to engage detailed consideration of the complaint, and that initial consideration is, well, who's the best person and the right person to deal with this complaint at first instance? Sometimes that is the Office of the Inspector General, but on many occasions it's not. It will, if I may, depend largely on the detail of the complaint. If the complaint is seeking reconsideration of an earlier decision, then it makes sense to have the complaint passed to, or the request for reconsideration passed to, a decision-maker who can remake that decision and provide that outcome. There's not much point in IGADF considering that complaint if it's, in effect, an application for an outcome that IGADF can't or can't necessarily provide. And where the complaint or the request for reconsideration passes back to a decision-maker, if the member is dissatisfied with that reconsideration request, or reconsideration decision, pardon me, the redress of grievance complaint can then continue, where we can scrutinise that decision if the member wishes.
So if we could go then back to TB, tender bundle document A at paragraph 458, it's igd.902.02.03 at dot 0044. And that third sentence? The point difference you were seeking to make about the concept that the IGADF works closely with COs to determine the most appropriate way of dealing with the rog is that, as part of that initial process of referral, there is consultation with commanding officers to determine who should, at first instance, look at the complaint. Am I right to have understood that?
Yes.
Okay. Now, it then goes on in the next sentence to say, in the majority of cases, the rog is substantively dealt with by the CO with subsequent review by the IGADF. So is that then an example of that proposition you advanced, that in a number of cases it can be dealt with within defence?
Yes.
And then it comes back to the IGADF?
Yes.
Now, the paragraph goes on to talk about the positioning of a redress of grievance as another function of command, and removing the perception that redress of grievances are an onerous or burdensome task. Do you agree with that characterisation of rogues and that that's really their primary purpose?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question.
So the proposition advanced in that sentence is that rog is a function of command, and the new system removes the perception that they're onerous or a burdensome task. In your view, is that the principal purpose of the new system?
No. I think it's a statement of a principle that complaint handling is a function of people management, and people management is primarily a function of command in the first instance.
Because what strikes me about this paragraph, Mr Snatchell, and in fact, this section that deals with the functions of your Directorate, is that there's no mention there of rogues as providing an independent mechanism of review for members, or being directed to providing an adequate safeguard for members who want to make a complaint about an act or decision or omission affecting their service?
Yes, I accept there's no mention of that.
Does that strike you as odd?
Yes, it does, with hindsight.
Now, can I ask, operator, can you please display tender bundle document number 14? This is a PowerPoint presentation, I understand it, Mr Snatchell, from a seminar that you gave this year to RAF commanders on the rog process?
Yes.
Does your Directorate regularly give such seminars to commanders?
Yes, in Air Force and Navy, we have for some years. We haven't for Army for some time.
Why is that?
Because decisions were taken by those who organise Army pre-command that they'd be addressed otherwise, or if they're addressed at all.
Do you give seminars of this type to members, to sort of give them help in terms of understanding what the process entails and how a complaint can properly be made?
No, my understanding is there's an element of military justice audits that are conducted by the Office of the IGADF that engages members in relation to complaint mechanisms, including redress of grievance.
But would it be fair to say the audit process is to assess their views on redress of grievance complaints, rather than to educate them on the system?
Yes.
In your view, is it a gap in the system that there is no education provided by your Directorate to members about how a redress of grievance complaint can be made?
I guess potentially, yes. We give seminars to members in other areas of command, not just commanders. So people capability officers in Air Force, we give seminars to... we give seminars to them during their training to help them understand what a redress of grievance is. In Air Force, they're the people that, if a member had a concern about a complaint, that the PCO would be the type of person that they would go to seeking information or seeking guidance of where to go to find information.
But it would be fair to say that to the extent to which your directorate provides education is principally those in command that are involved in decision making about redress of grievances rather than members who themselves may make a complaint?
No, I wouldn't agree with that. I don't know that the ambit of PCOs are necessarily involved in the decision making within rogues.
Okay, so you give education to command officers and PCOs, but aside from that, there's no education given to members about how to make a redress of grievance complaint by your directorate?
Not face to face, no.
Can I ask the operator to please turn to dot zero zero two seven of the document? And you there, Mr Snatchell, give an overview of what really is a redress of grievance complaint? I'm struck by the last paragraph of that slide where it said, "Military service is not a contract of employment. ADF members serve at the pleasure of the crown and do not have the rights that civilian employees have." What were you intending to convey by that statement?
Within defence, there is increasing use of the word employment, employee to describe members of the Defence Force. And I think it leads to confusion and lack of understanding as to the nature of military service. I use a very basic example with that where I talk about an employee's right to terminate their own employment. And that's not a right that members enjoy. Under the regulation, members may only apply to leave the Defence Force. It's a practical example. Just bringing the commander's attention and awareness to that they are dealing with something that is not your run-of-the-mill, ordinary employment situation.
So am I right to understand what you were seeking to convey by that last paragraph? Is that members have a lesser body of rights than their civilian counterparts under contracts of employment?
Yes.
Why is it material to convey that to commanders as part of your explanation of the redress of grievance process?
Because when you're making decisions that relate to members' service, like any other administrative decision, I think you need to consider the context, the legislation, the legal framework within which it's being made.
So you're saying to commanders, you need to bear in mind that the members about whom you are making decisions have a lesser body of rights than their civilian counterparts?
I think that's a statement of fact, yes.
Would you accept though, Mr Snatchell, that an ADF member who read that paragraph wouldn't be embodied with confidence in the redress of grievance system? That is a system directed to protecting their rights?
Not in the context with which it's presented, I don't think so.
So do you accept that it's a statement that wouldn't instil confidence in members? About the rog system?
I'm sorry, are you talking about the statement as a standalone statement? Or are you talking about the statement as part of the presentation?
Well, as part of the presentation, it is your introduction where you explain what a redress of grievance complaint is. And as part of that introduction, you say it's a special type of complaint, but remember, military service is not a contract of employment. ADF members serve at the pleasure of the crown and do not have the rights that civilian employees have.
Yes. That's why there's a special complaint system there to reflect, it's a protection for that special relationship.
So your intent in that last paragraph is to emphasise to commanders that the redress of grievance process is there to protect them because members don't have the same rights as their civilian counterparts?
Yes.
Okay. Can we move then to point zero zero three zero of that spreadsheet? Or that PowerPoint presentation, rather? Now, this touches on a comment you've made earlier, Mr Snatchell. You say there complaint handling is primarily a function of people management. People management is primarily a function of command. Can you explain to commissioners what you mean by that?
Complaints come in many forms and command has a special relationship with their members about how they interact with them and what they do with them. In my view, command has a higher obligation to look after members than may be attracted by an ordinary civil employment relationship. It's a message to command saying, don't take a sloping shoulders approach to these complaints. It's one of your members, they're critical within your unit to providing capability. You need to deal with it. If they've got a problem, you need to deal with it to the extent that you can.
Can I then turn you to page zero zero three two of that spreadsheet? Or PowerPoint? So this speaks to that statutory process we went to earlier in regulations, I think it's 41 and 43, about the process upon making a redress of grievance complaint. Am I right that a member is required to give their redress of grievance complaint to a commanding officer? Or an authorised complaint recipient?
Yes, I think that's in Section 41 of the regulation.
Can you explain to commissioners the distinction between those two individuals?
As in commanding officer or authorised complaint recipient?
Specifically what an authorised complaint recipient is.
An authorised complaint recipient is somebody authorised by the CDF to receive a redress of grievance complaint.
Now, if a member wants to submit a rog complaint about a decision by the commanding officer, is that a barrier to the process working effectively?
Not necessarily. It depends on the views that the member may have about their commanding officer. Occasionally, we do get inquiries about that. And I referred earlier to that where if somebody's got a concern about putting their complaint in through the rog system, we can look to alternatives. In numerous cases where members have expressed concern about submitting their complaint to their commanding officer, the solution has been an explanation to them that just because that's where they submit their complaint, that doesn't mean where their complaint gets considered. And should they wish to, they can still submit a redress of grievance complaint as a bare form and then provide further information later. Part of the fact finding that is conducted when a complaint is submitted is to identify who the decision maker was for the complaint, who the decision maker was for the decision complained of. And just because it was the CO is not necessarily a barrier to the CO dealing with that complaint. For example, if you were to receive a redress of grievance complaint about an omission by a CO to action a leave application, the CO may well just action the leave application on receipt of the rog. There are circumstances where COs have made a decision, the member has submitted a redress of grievance complaint and provided new information. I talked to RAF commanders about those circumstances that they're not necessarily subject of apprehended bias just because of the circumstances. And engagement with the member to say, hey, I was the one that made that decision, you've provided new information. Would you be happy with me remaking the decision in light of the new information?
So if I can just understand what you've said, Mr Snatchell, you would accept, would you not, that the fact that a complaint is about the commanding officer may be a barrier to an individual putting in a rog?
It may be in circumstances.
And specifically if that rog expresses an adverse view about a commander who made the decision, that that may be a reason why a member would feel uncomfortable using the rog system?
Yes.
And in that instance, your office or your directorate has assisted members to find workarounds?
Yes.
But those workarounds don't actually exist within the system as it is set out in the regulations?
Yes, I think that's correct.
Okay. Now, as is outlined on that PowerPoint, there is a requirement that within 14 days, a rog complaint received by command be referred to IGADF. What safety nets exist in the new system to ensure that a rog complaint is actually referred on to your office?
Okay. When using the defence form to submit a redress of grievance complaint, if the member inserts their commanding officer's name and email address correctly and hits the submit button, we automatically get a copy of the complaint on submission. We have some engagement with the unit, providing a template for fact finding, inform them of a requirement in policy for them to notify us that they have received the complaint. That's a safety check to ensure that perhaps the CO is not away on leave, that it's the incorrect CO, it's gone to somebody who doesn't know anything about it. And it's also the opportunity for the commanding officer to tell us who their point of contact is as to who they want us to deal with with any questions that we may have about the complaint and what it is that they're doing about it. We follow up with commanding officers, I think generally at the 12-day mark if we haven't received a referral. And the desk officers within my directorate get on the phone and give the units a hurry along to ensure that the referral does occur. We track referral and certainly for management purposes, I look at the compliance with the 14-day requirement as both a performance measure of COs' compliance with the regulation and a performance indicator of how well we are monitoring what is happening within the unit during that initial phase.
And does your directorate keep data on the compliance by commanding officers with that 14-day timeframe?
We have unfortunately a spreadsheet which is our primary source of tracking these because the Defence System Management, Information Management System on redresses of grievance was very specific for the old system, which operated very differently. And so on that spreadsheet, some of the data that we track are date of submission and date of referral, yes.
And what do you do with that data? Do you provide feedback, for example, through to the CDF about non-compliance periods with referral on to your office?
I don't know that we have so far. I'd have to go back and check and see what has been done with that in the past.
I just want to take you to a particular example. Can I ask that the operator please display Tender Bundle Document Number G, wit dot double zero double one dot triple zero one dot zero zero one four? Now, I'll ask you some questions about this particular statement, but I'd ask that you not mention any of the names concerned. Have you had an opportunity to review this statement, Mr Snatchell?
I think I recognise it, yes.
Could I ask the operator to please turn to page zero zero one three? Sorry, operator, it's dot zero zero three nine and in particular paragraph 118. Now, you'll see there, there's reference to a redress of grievance being submitted in May of 2021. Are you aware of this particular matter?
I don't have a detailed awareness of the matter.
Okay.
I've got a general awareness of it.
Can I ask the operator to please turn to paragraph 120?
Sorry, Miss Longbottom. There is a reference to a particular regiment there.
I'd ask that there be a non-publication order made in respect of that particular reference and we just cut the live feed, please.
Granted. Perhaps the viewing could be restricted to us.
Yes, yes, if the operator, oh, it is, I've been told the viewing is restricted to...
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we then turn to paragraph 120? The proposition there advanced that I'm asking you to comment on, Mr Snatchell, is that the redress of grievance wasn't submitted to your office until more than three weeks after it was lodged? And that only occurred after there was intervention from the complainant's solicitor seeking assistance? Are you aware of that?
No.
Are you aware of this particular redress of grievance complaint? I think you've said you're aware of it in a general sense.
I think I'm aware of it in the general sense.
Can I ask the operator to please turn to paragraph 1225? It is there stated that after about four months, the complainant was told that they should receive an outcome within weeks. The individual was then told that consideration of their rog was suspended until completion of a particular inquiry. That individual gave evidence today that it was 850 days from submitting their complaint until they received a response last week? Are you aware of that?
Response from the IGADF, yes.
Yes. And the effect of that response, as I understand the evidence given today, was that the complaint would not be considered further, but there was no specific reasons given?
I'm not across the detail of the response, sorry.
Okay.
May I? If it's the complaint that I think it was, there was a... No, I won't speculate. I couldn't be sure.
Let me ask this question. What oversight do you have as Director of responses given by your office to redress of grievance complaints? Do you sign off on every letter that goes out?
No, I don't.
Okay. What safety assurance system exists within your office to ensure that complaints are handled in a standardised way, reasons are given, and there is a trauma-informed approach?
The Inspector General has delegated decision-making on rogues to officers at different levels. There are a number of people within the office that hold authorisation to sign off on redress of grievance decisions. Those decision-makers act on behalf of the IGADF. They talk to me where they consider it's necessary. I, in my management role, do have oversight as to the time taken dealing with individual complaints. I have input into which decision-makers deal with individual complaints.
Sorry, Mr Snatchell, we're going to run out of time. Can we just get to the point? Is it one person making the decision, being reviewed by another person?
No.
Thank you. So it's one person makes a decision and it goes out?
There might be occasion for discussion with me if they wish to.
Thank you.
And there is no formal governance system within your office to have oversight of the quality of the responses that go out?
I think there probably is an expectation that my judgement on what decision-makers it went to, that there'd be a level of responsibility on my part.
So the extent of the oversight system is your decision-making about who handles a particular redress of grievance complaint within your office?
Yeah, and I think if they got it wrong, I'd be accountable for that.
Okay. I'm conscious of the time, Commissioners, I understand we're taking a break at 1:45. I've just got a small question I can ask in that period. Operator, can you please display tender bundle document number F? It's EXP dot zero zero one one dot triple zero one dot triple zero one at zero zero two eight. And if I could just get you to expand the fourth paragraph of that document that identifies the main categories of redress of grievance complaints? Then, Mr Snatchell, this is an extract from the 2021-2022 Annual Report issued by the IGADF. So it indicates that the largest single category of redress of grievance complaints concerns termination decisions?
Yes, correct.
That's 23%?
Well, it's... The largest category there is 39% on decisions about the career.
But am I right to understand that decisions about a complainant's career capture a range of different... It's a broad church of decisions.
Sorry, yes, I do accept your premise.
Yes, so the largest single category is termination decisions and that would include decisions by delegate in the relevant service that a member's service be terminated under the section 24.1c, not in the best interests of defence grounds?
Yes.
Then the largest broad category of complaint concerns decisions about the complainant's career?
Yes.
That would include posting decisions?
Yes.
What other type of decisions would be captured by that category?
Decisions on training, decisions on transfer of service category. Career. Perhaps decisions on transfer between the services. We have a catalogue that explains those out.
Would it cover the motion?
Reduction in rank, sorry. Yes, it would.
So you've said your office has a catalogue. Do you, beyond the annual report, do you keep granular figures about the types of redress of grievance complaints you receive and report them back to, for example, the Chief of Defence?
There is a level of reporting that goes into an IGADF document called the Statistics Catalogue, yes?
Yes. So any granular level data is kept in each financial year's statistic catalogue that the IGADF publishes?
Yes, and the data's there if we had a specific need to interrogate and break it down, we can.
Okay. Commissioners, that might be a convenient time to adjourn?
Thank you, Miss Longbottom. We'll adjourn for half an hour for lunch.
All rise. The Royal Commission into Defence and Veterans Suicide will adjourn for lunch. The Royal Commission into Defence and Veterans Suicide is now resumed.
Thank you, Miss Longbottom. Just before we start, there's one procedural matter I think you're aware of. We just want to read onto the record that it was a non-publication direction pursuant to section 6D for Delta brackets 3. It was made on the 1st of September 2023 and signed by the three commissioners. Pursuant to subsection 6D brackets 3 of the Royal Commission's Act 1902 brackets Commonwealth, the commission directs, subject to any subsequent direction of the commission, the documents identified in schedule one not to be published, except to the commission, its staff, including staff of firms contracted to provide services to the commission, insofar as those staff have been assigned to do work for the commission, and counsel and solicitors assisting the commission. And it's signed by the three of us. Thank you, Miss Longbottom.
Thank you, Commissioner Cowdys. Mr Snatchell, I want to turn to the timeframes in resolving redress of grievance complaints under the old system as compared to the new system. You would accept that one of the problems with the old system were the prolonged timeframes taken before a redress of grievance complaint was made and a decision was received?
Decision on the higher levels of review, yes.
And that might best be illustrated by reference to tender bundle document number 14, IGD dot zero zero two zero dot triple zero one dot zero zero two five at dot zero zero three six. If you could just turn to dot zero zero three six, please, operator? And expand the graph comparison, new rog system versus old rog system. So that table or graph from your PowerPoint presentation indicates that under the old system, where it was a CDF referral, the average time from submission to closure was 818 days and the median timeframe was 830 days?
Yes, correct.
But even at the level of service chief, there was a 498 average, 463 medium day timeframe?
Yes.
At the unit level, there seemed to be a significantly lower timeframe, but still a substantive timeframe between making a submission and its closure?
Certainly, I'd describe it as between submission and the commanding officer's decision, yes.
I'm just using the language that's in the actual table, submission to closed.
Sorry, yeah.
Now, the new system has reduced, in your view, the complaint timeframes?
Yes.
What do you attribute that reduction in time to?
Well, there were three layers in the old system, commanding officer, service chief and CDF referral. There's effectively only a maximum of two layers in the current system. I also attribute the reduction to improved guidance, improved analysis early to get each decision into the appropriate process for it to be considered and by whom.
So could I just stop you there? When you're talking about improved guidance and analysis, are you referring back to those, the evidence you gave earlier today, about the initial stage, once a redress of grievance complaint is received, an IGADF consult with command about who is apt to deal with a complaint at first instance?
Yes, and the analysis that attaches to that.
And in terms of the analysis that attaches to that, are there any formal policy documents that give guidance to IGADF in how it deals with a complaint put into one side calm?
Not that I can think of to answer that question. No.
And do you receive any specific... Do you or other delegates in relation to redress of grievance complaints receive any specific training in how to make decisions under part seven of the Defence Regulation 2016?
We receive administrative decision-making training, which is aimed squarely at administrative decision-making. Over the years, that training has been tailored to suit not just the types of decisions that we are considering complaints about, but also the redress of grievance decisions themselves.
So is that training specifically tailored to your directorate or does it apply to your office more generally?
Well, the general administrative decision-making training applies generally. The specifics for redress of grievance apply to my directorate.
And so is that training reduced to writing?
It's training that's delivered by a consultant.
And can you give me the area of expertise of the consultant who delivers that training?
She's an ex AGS lawyer, admin law specialist barrister at the Victorian Bar and author on administrative power and the exercise of it.
Okay. Now, if I can just turn back to the reduced timeframes, would you accept that one possible reason why timeframes under the new system have been reduced is because of the number of decisions that are not being considered or not being substantively considered by the directorate?
Can I clarify? Is the question asking about one of the reduced timeframes, the extent to which the office of the IGADF considers complaints?
Yes, you have the power under Regulation 46, I think, to decide not to consider or to stop considering a complaint?
Yes.
I'll call it the Regulation 46 power?
Yes.
Could one of the reasons for the reduced timeframes in dealing with a rog complaint be the exercise of the Regulation 46 power?
Yes.
Would you think that is perhaps the principal reason for the reduction in timeframes in dealing with a redress of grievance complaint?
I'd be speculating on whether it was principle or not.
Does your directorate have any key performance indicators?
Yes, we do.
Is one of those the complaint resolution timeframe?
Yes.
Are there any other key performance indicators around member satisfaction with dealing with a redress of grievance complaint?
There are KPIs in the IGADF strategic plan. Right on the spot, I don't recall specifically what's there. From a management perspective, I also look at the rate of complaint to the Commonwealth Ombudsman, how often we get investigations, notifications from the Ombudsman. We won't... The Ombudsman don't notify us if they receive a complaint, they only notify us if they open an investigation. I also monitor that whenever a discretion is exercised to stop considering a complaint, we offer reconsideration to complainants. So I also monitor how often requests for reconsideration are submitted and a performance measure on how often that request for reconsideration results in a different outcome.
And can I just stop you there? In relation to the metric of referrals to the Commonwealth Ombudsman, would you accept that in the 2021-2022 financial year, there had been an increase in the number of referrals to the Commonwealth Ombudsman? That is, that the figure is going up?
I'd...
You're not in a position to answer that?
I'd purely be working on memory, I just don't recall. I wouldn't... I would not be shocked by it, no.
Okay. So in terms of that metric of the success of the new system, certainly current data indicates a lack of member satisfaction because there is... You're not surprised there's an increase in referrals to the Commonwealth Ombudsman?
No.
Now, if I could just ask if the operator could please display the other graph on that page? Just in terms of the time taken to deal with a redress of grievance complaint, you would accept that the timeframes shown in that table indicate that it's still a substantive period between a complaint being made and its resolution or its finalisation?
Yes.
And you would accept that the time taken in resolving a redress of grievance complaint is likely to cause stress to members?
It can in circumstances, yes, I accept that.
And one of the reasons why it could particularly cause stress to members is that there's no right in policy or legislation to suspend the executive action, the subject of the complaint pending its resolution?
Yes, that's correct.
That's a matter that's within the discretion of the decision-maker?
It's in the service, yes.
So particularly in relation to, let's take termination decisions, for example, it may be a time of acute stress for a member because they have no right to have that decision suspended pending consideration of the redress of grievance complaint?
Yes.
And am I right that it's a feature of those redress of grievance complaints that are sometimes actually found in... that are sometimes actually found in favour of a member? That the view will be expressed by your office, that there is merit in the complaint? There's nothing practically that can be done by the time it's resolved because the decision wasn't suspended?
There are occasions that that has occurred, yes.
And do you keep data about the average or median timeframe for review of a termination decision particularly?
I could get that, yes.
I might just take you to the, when you say you could get that, does that mean that you could undertake the investigations to obtain that information? Or do you, does your office or directorate keep it as a matter of course?
I think I have, I think I have information of that nature in my bag. That is information that I occasionally look at, looking at timeliness of the different subject matters of complaints.
When you say in your bag, do you mean in your means of recall?
Yes.
But is it a standard practice of the directorate under your supervision to keep and feed back that data about termination decisions?
I will occasionally look at data on the various subjects of complaint.
But it'd be fair to say there's no formalised system in relation to you monitoring that?
No, that's, sorry, that, yes, that's correct.
Okay. I just want to take you to a couple of examples about the timeframe to deal with a redress of grievance complaint, particularly concerning a termination decision. And I can, I can take you to the, you're familiar with the document, that is, the response to N T G I G D zero zero six?
Yes.
I'm going to put some propositions to you in relation to that document and if you need me to take you to it, I'm very happy to do that.
Can I ask, is this the spreadsheet?
It is the spreadsheet, yes.
Not, not the.
No.
Underlying, yeah.
And did you have any involvement in the preparation of the spreadsheet?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so would it be fair to say that you are very familiar with its contents?
I'm very familiar with how it was structured and how I asked for the data to be gathered to fill it. I have read through the spreadsheet. I wouldn't say that I'm entirely familiar with every aspect of it in terms of analysis.
And, and just if I can just orient the commissioners in relation to that document, what it does is it covers the period one January twenty twenty until seven July twenty twenty-three?
Yes.
It specifically concerns redress of grievance complaints in relation to termination decisions?
Yes, termination of service decisions, yes.
And it provides an analysis of redress of grievance complaints falling into that category that first of all, your office decided not to consider or decided to stop considering pursuant to Regulation forty-six?
Yes.
And the reasons for that. And then separately, an analysis in relation to those complaints in respect of which you decided not to exercise the power under Regulation forty-six to stop considering the complaint?
Yes.
And they are matters that are particularly within your oversight function as Director of the Directorate of Military Redress and Review.
Yes, they are.
Okay. So coming back to the timeframes for review of a termination decision, can I suggest to you that in the last financial year, there was at least one instance when the redress of grievance process took almost a year?
Yes.
And in that instance, the O I G A D F did not substantively consider the complaint, rather they exercised the discretion under Regulation forty-six to decide to stop considering the complaint?
The exercise of the discretion under section forty-six can be exercised at any time. It is occasionally used as a softer decision rather than to say complaint not upheld. There are any number of circumstances where the amount of consideration that has gone to that point is effectively full substantive consideration. But in, in dealing with and communicating to the person a decision's taken to give an explanation as to what it is that has been found. And even in circumstances where we can't see anything else that might be able to be looked at, we would still exercise that discretion.
Now, I'm going to come to take you through your understanding of the particular bases upon which the power to stop considering a rog may be made. But can you just explain to me what you mean by the expression softer?
If I were to, if, to use harsh words, telling a member words that there is no merit in their complaint can not be desirable. There may be some seeking softer words, such as your complaint has been unable to be substantiated. For example, those things, so a softer way of saying, giving them an answer to the substance of what they've complained about and exercising a discretion and saying that further consideration is not warranted in all of the circumstances.
And in relation to the, that softer approach, am I right that your staff members and you yourself, who routinely deal with complainants, receive training in trauma-informed responses?
Yes, we do.
Now, an aspect of that training is vicarious trauma, so that is trauma that you and your fellow colleagues may receive, may experience in terms of dealing with complaints?
Yes.
But am I right that there is an aspect of that training that's specifically directed to ensuring that complainants are treated not only professionally but also sensitively and compassionately?
Yes.
And can you tell the commissioners, is there a particular name for that training?
There's a variety of training. There's compassionate foundations. We also have some training on trauma-informed leadership or management, trauma-informed safe workplace. These are all things that are set out in the I G A D F welfare plan. There's an extra to that that sets out the training, some of which is already being, has already been implemented and some of it's in the process of being implemented. I'm aware of other initiatives within the office to develop training and guidance on trauma-informed interview methods or interview questions.
And, and if I can just come back to that softer approach, would you accept that a risk with that softer approach is that there might be a disconnect between what a complainant is entitled to in terms of resolution of a redress of grievance complaint under part seven of the Defence Regulation and the actual decision that is made? And I can give you a specific example of that if that would help.
It would help, please, yes.
So you might have an instance, and touching upon what you've said earlier, where, for example, you undertake substantive review of a particular complaint and you reach the view that it is not one in respect of which you would make a recommendation that the decision be overturned. But you decide to take the softer approach to just stop considering that redress of grievance rather than completing the process and making a finding on it under Regulation forty-five? So there's that disconnect between what you can elect to do. You can substantively consider it and give a decision or you can just decide to stop considering it?
Yes, based on the same amount of consideration, yes.
Do you think there's a risk in that approach in that you are presuming that the member would want you to stop considering it rather than just following the statutory scheme through its ordinary course?
Well, I don't see it as the ordinary course of the statutory scheme. It's, it's a flexible process. I see the, the benefit of the forty, exercising the discretion also, that if there's something else that, given the explanation that's been given to the member, if there's something else that they think that we have missed, that provides the opportunity for them to raise that with us. I had not turned my mind to the, what you're suggesting, that somebody might think that that's a lesser outcome. It's certainly not anything that was intended in, in going that way.
But you accept that's a possibility?
I, I, I think it could be, yes.
And what engagement do the staff of your directorate have with complainants about the redress of grievance process?
It varies by complaint. Since around twenty, two thousand, twenty twenty-one, we've sought to increase the amount of direct contact that we have with members. It's always been there on a, as needs basis, even as early as when a complaint comes in. Within twenty-four hours, there've been occasions when I've, the complaint's been brought to my attention and I've rung the complainant to check on their welfare. The increases since twenty twenty-one are intended to increase engagement, attain members' opinions on satisfaction or otherwise of the commanding officer's decision. That informs the need for us to continue or whether we could exercise a discretion early if they are satisfied. It is also intended to provide an opportunity for members to provide additional information, prompt them to. They're welcome to provide additional information at any time, but it's to prompt them and remind them or point out to them that they can. So if they've received a C O's decision and there's anything specifically, specific that they wish for us to address, we're trying to increase that reaching out to members.
Now, what happened in twenty twenty-one that prompted the directorate to increase its engagement with complainants?
It's been a graduated increase over time. I, I think there's been an increase in the complexity of complaints over time. There's been new ideas from staff members that have come in. I had a, a major as an army liaison officer who, of her own initiative, was increasingly engaging with, with members, with complaints, probably more so than what predecessors had seen. We had discussions about the benefits of doing that. It made a lot of sense, so internal discussions, internal training of implementing that and increasing it. The Inspector General and I have had discussions, as we do quite regularly, about looking for ways that we could increase the satisfaction of complainants.
So it's been, would it be fair to characterise it as an organic but not a formal process of reviewing your engagement with complainants?
Yes, I'd describe it as continuous improvement, that we're always looking to ways that we can do things better.
And if I can just stop you there, in, in terms of that continuous improvement, am I, is there any formal assurance audit done of your directorate to monitor that continuous improvement?
No.
Okay. Can I just then focus back on timeframes? I, I think you accepted the proposition that the timeframes between making a redress of grievance complaint and that complaint being finalised are still substantive?
Yes.
What can be done to address that timeframe? More staff needed, for example?
Yes, that would be very helpful.
And, but am I right that in some instances at least, your office has engaged external law firms to assist with managing redress of grievance complaints?
Yes.
So what are the barriers then to getting more staff in to assist with the process?
It's not just more staff, it's also the right staff. The A P S had, and the A D F had what they called full-time equivalent caps for a long period of time that this government abolished. I think that was probably a barrier. I, I have multiple positions that are established and funded that are vacant because of an inability for the services to post people or suitable people to them.
So can I just stop you there then? I mean, would one way, I, I mean, you yourself don't come from a military background?
No, I don't.
So would one way to address that barrier to be to not confine the pool of delegates to members who serve within defence?
Not just delegates, case officers to actually do the work.
And case officers as well? Would that be one practical measure that could be taken to overcome that timeframe barrier?
Yes.
Do you know if that's an issue that's been raised with defence or with the I G A D F?
Resourcing's been an issue that's been raised within the office for an extended period of time.
Okay. Now, I just want to shift topics and take you, Mr Snatchell, to the actual process of considering a redress of grievance complaint. Can I ask the operator to please display Regulation forty-four from the Defence Regulations two thousand and sixteen? Now, while that's coming up, I appreciate you're not a lawyer, Mr Snatchell. My question is really direct, my questions are really directed to getting your understanding as the director of the directorate that considers these complaints and as a decision-maker yourself of what the decision-making process involves.
May I ask that to be enlarged, please?
Yes, we can certainly have that enlarged. Could you please enlarge Regulation forty-four one?
Yes.
So this provision provides that if a complaint is made under the part, the I G A D F must consider the complaint. Can you explain to commissioners your understanding of what the act of considering requires?
Turning your mind to the complaint.
Does it involve a merits review?
No.
Why do you say that? How have you come to that understanding?
Because a combination of section forty-four and section forty-six.
Is that something about which your directorate has received advice?
I would need to check.
Okay. Would you accept that another construction, and I might just ask if the operator can display the entirety of Regulation forty-four? You look at Regulation forty-four three, it gives the I G A D F a broad power in relation to complaints. The I G A D F may adopt any procedure that he or she considers appropriate in the circumstances. Would you accept that another view is that consideration allows and in fact requires a merits review of a redress of grievance complaint?
I, I don't believe that that's an interpretation of what's there that's available.
Would you accept that, just in terms of transparency of the process, it is a deficiency that your directorate doesn't have any policy documents that specify or guide decision-making under this part?
I don't see that as a deficiency at all.
Why not?
Because the range of subject matters of complaints that can be submitted is so broad. As a manager, I look for people and to train people on how to, to deal appropriately with what is in front of them. how to, to deal appropriately with what is in front of them and not look at some reference document that may not have contemplated that particular complaint and circumstances.
But in terms of a quality assurance programme, as I understand it, you've said you don't oversee every decision that goes out the door. So you, the, the extent of quality assurance is you're choosing a decision maker in relation to a complaint. Um, and separately, there is no policy document or guidance documents that at least just assist decision makers in understanding what their function is under each provision of Part Seven. Wouldn't you accept that's a deficiency in the process?
I don't see it that way. Sorry, no.
Okay. Um, now, are, are there any barriers to your directorate undertaking a merits review of a redress of grievance complaint?
That largely depends on what's meant by merits review. My understanding of merits review is that, um, the person conducting the review has the power to, um, replace the decision that has been made.
Well, we might be at cross purposes then. Um, the aspect, when I am talking about merits review, I am talking about the capacity of the delegate to sit in the shoes of the decision maker and reach a view about whether or not it was the correct or preferable decision made. So are there any barriers to a delegate such as yourself undertaking a merits review of that type?
I don't think so. Um, we'd be looking at what occurred, whether it accorded with the relevant legislation and or policy and whether it was the preferable decision, perhaps I'd describe that as being whether it's within the bounds of reasonable decision-making or in making a, a, um, a decision on the complaint as to whether there's anything in any of that which warranted someone who was authorised to remake the decision actually doing so.
It, it, it's, it's really, I'm talking about the distinction between whether or not the decision was open or whether the decision is the right decision, that is, the correct or preferable decision.
Um, I don't think there's any barrier to a decision under Part Seven, a decision maker concluding that the decision m- may not have been the correct or preferable decision, but they don't have the power to remake it themselves. It would simply be communicating, um, that finding or that view to somebody who could.
So you would accept then, if we come back to Regulation forty four one, that a delegate is empowered to undertake a merits review in the sense of reaching a view about whether or not the decision was the correct or preferable decision. Putting to one side what they can do about it, they, they can reach, they can have that merits review.
Yes, on de- on, on that definition of merits review, yes.
Okay. Let's then turn to the question of power in Regulation forty five. Um, can I just talk about the old system? In the old system, could the chain of command actually overturn the decision the subject of the redress of grievance complaint?
Um, that was subject to quite a lot of disagreement. Um, our view was where they held an appropriate authorisation, um, or delegation, yes. Um, but in circumstances where they didn't, the answer was they were restricted to making a decision on the complaint and making a recommendation to a person who could remake the decision.
And in terms of reaching a view about the old system, would, would the proper course be for us to go and have a look at the Defence Regulation nineteen fifty two, which governed the old system?
I th- that would be part of it, I think. Um, may I ask, are you referring to Justice Logan's judgment in Fulton versus the Commonwealth?
No, I'm just simply referring to, um, I'm simply referring to the, um, explanatory note to the two thousand and sixteen Defence Regulation that, that speaks to the nineteen fifty two regulation governing the old system.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so that, that would be the place to have a look at the scope of the power under, under the old system. And, and we don't need to spend too much time on this.
Um, I, I wonder, might it be helpful for me to venture very briefly into one issue? Um, where the power that has been exercised to make the decision is one of a command power, um, then obviously I think a CO is empowered to remake that decision. It's not so clear when it's a statutory power and the, I think a lot of confusion has been caused by when, um, what was traditionally a command power has been codified, um, such as termination of service. And views have been expressed that, um, the nature of a redress of grievance in history did empower a commanding officer to remake a decision, to replace a decision on termination of service. Um, my understanding of contemporary, um, administrative law requirements is once that power was codified, a CO could only remake a decision on termination if they held an authorisation from the CDF to do so. Um, that's where I think confusion has arisen and this has been a controversial point.
Um, and so you're talking there about the old system, specifically termination decisions, and I take it the views expressed by Justice Logan in his minority judgment in the recent full court decision in Full- Fulton?
I think it was in Fulton number one that, that I'd be referring to. I'm not intimately familiar with, um, number two.
Let's shift back to the new system then, um, and in particular Regulation forty five. Uh, I think we're in agreement that Regulation forty five does not give the power to actually make a new decision where you decide that the redress of grievance complaint has merit.
Yes.
But you do have extensive powers. Those powers include findings and recommendations.
Yes.
So, uh, in a practical sense, you have got the capacity, and let's specifically focus on termination decisions, to say on a merits review, I don't think the t- termination decision was the correct or preferable decision.
Yes.
And then having regard to that merits review, say to the chain of command, I recommend that the decision be overturned.
Yes.
Okay. Now, am I right to understand that, um, there are a system of delegations in relation to decision-making powers under Part Seven?
Yes.
But the ranks at which particular powers can be exercised vary?
Yes.
Can you give the commissioners an overview of why that's the case?
Um, it was considered that the higher level powers ought be exercised, um, by persons at, at, at higher levels with the organisation. Um, for example, the, um, the section forty six power to, um, decide to not or stop considering a complaint because it's considered frivolous or vexatious is very tightly held because that would be, um, frankly, um, offensive to write to somebody and use that power. Um, and would be used very sparingly. So that is only delegated down to the, um, the deputy inspector general, not below.
So, um, so I would be wrong to think that the function under Regulation forty six is delegated to a warrant officer class one?
Um, forty six one A, um, probably is forty six one, that, that, it will vary on the subsections, not, um.
I guess, I guess I'm just asking you to really explain to me, I, I think you've, you've used the expression that it would sort of be offensive that particular powers would be delegated to a lower echelon in terms of rank within APS, within defence and APS, if I understood that correctly?
Yeah, no, it, it, it's not offensive that it was delegated. I, I'm saying, and perhaps offensive is the wrong word, um, it would be, um, controversial, um, inflammatory perhaps to exercise and tell a, a, a member that their complaint was frivolous or vexatious. And because that would, I think, be inflammatory to do that, that is a power that is very closely held by, um, the inspector general and the deputy inspector general and to my knowledge has never been used.
Okay, so the effect of your evidence is that, um, the more I guess, the, the, the more, uh, controversial the decision. So for example, a decision to dismiss a complaint because it is frivolous or vexatious, the higher the rank of the individual who ought to be delegated to make that decision.
Yes.
Now, as I understand it, just, I just want to focus specifically on termination decisions. Um, am I right to understand that in terms of making termination decisions at first instance, there is a requirement that the person who makes the termination decision be at least a rank above the person who has been terminated?
Um, that's broadly consistent with my understanding of CDF's delegations to the services, yes.
But there's no equivalent delegation in terms of the persons within your office who are delegated to consider a redress of grievance with respect to such a termination decision?
No, that's all right.
Okay. Um, now, I just want to turn then to, uh, Regulation forty six one A, if I could, please. Now, we've touched upon this, um, in some detail already, but in substance, this is the regulation that empowers the IG ADF to decide not to consider or to stop considering a complaint?
Yes.
Um, sub-paragraph A, uh, permits that power to be exercised when the IG ADF forms the opinion that the complaint has been satisfactorily resolved. Can you explain to commissioners what you understand that expression to encompass?
Um, when in the IG ADS view that the commanding officer, um, has or will be able to satisfactorily resolve the complaint, um, being that they provide the member with a decision that in the Assistant IG ADS view is sufficient to, um, satisfy, um, uh, the, the complainant or is likely to be sati- will satisfy the complainant, um, g- in terms of the outcome for their complaint.
So your understanding is that the power under forty six one A would only be exercised where the opinion is formed that the complaint can be resolved to the satisfaction of the member who actually made the complaint?
Where the IG ADF, Assistant IG ADF's view that it is suf- that the CO's decision is sufficient to, um, satisfy, is, or is likely to be sufficient to satisfy the complainant, yes.
Okay. A- and in terms of the understanding you formed of that provision, how have you reached that understanding, accepting there are no sort of policy documents that speak to the construction of the section?
Um, by looking at the complaint, looking at the reasons provided, looking at the, um, um, commanding officer's decision, um, it's effectively doing a, um, a level of consideration of the complaint with the benefit of seeing what the commanding officer has done and their analysis.
Can I, can I just stop you there? I, I'm not, I, I'm talking about how have you, how have you come to your understanding about what forty six one A encompasses?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
So forty six one A asks a delegate such as yourself to turn your mind to whether or not the complaint has been satisfactorily resolved?
Yes.
How have you come to your understanding about what that requires? Have you received any training about that? Is there any document that speaks to that?
Um, I think it's a reflection of the administrative decision-making training that we've gone through where we've had a look at the decision that's been complained of. Um, we're going through, looking at things where they're not the, um, decision accords with the legislation and policy applicable, whether even the right legislation policy that applies to that has been identified. Um, and wh- whether the exercise i- is, um, is within the bounds of reasonfulness and, um, what the CO's analysis of that has been.
Okay, so you've spoken before, you, you received some training, I think you said, from a barrister within AGS?
It's been, um, annual, with the exception of COVID, it's been, um, tried to be annual training, um, for quite a, quite a few years.
Okay, I just want to ask.
I'm sorry, she's, um, an ex AGS solicitor who's now at the bar.
An ex AGS solicitor who's now at the bar, okay. So I just want to take you then to, to the annexure to, um, that we spoke about before, NTG one GD zero zero six. To just go through a couple of examples about where the power under Reg forty six one A have, has been exercised. Um, can the operator please display that, uh, document? I'll just get the tender bundle document number two. Uh, it's IGD dot quadruple nine dot zero 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 three dot zero 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 three, and I think it's to be displayed on a confidential screen. And can I ask if the operator could please turn to row eighty one in that table? So if you can take a moment to look at that, Mr. Snatchell, you'll see this was a termination decision made under section twenty four one C.
I'm sorry, I can't read it.
No, can I just ask the operator to please expand row eighty one? And if it's difficult to expand the entirety of it, I might just get the operator, if they could expand rows L and K. Can you see that now, Mr. Snatchell?
I can.
So you can see this is a decision made under forty six one A. The reasons for the decision is I concur that your complaint is without merit.
Yes.
Now, at least on the face of it, that doesn't seem to be a reason for a decision that engages satisfaction on the part of the complainant about the outcome.
Um, yes, I agree with that.
Okay. Um, again, if we can go down to row eighty nine, um, if you can expand rows L to K, again, forty six one A. Again, the reasons are, um, decided to stop considering, CO has resolved complaint, no merit. Again, at least on its face, that doesn't seem to be a decision that engages Reg forty six one A. Would you agree with that?
Um, I, I think you're looking at a very brief reason for decision. Um, to form a concluded view, we'd probably need to look at the detail of the decision.
But, I mean, you had some involvement in directing the preparation of this table.
Um, yes, in my direction to provide, provide a summary of the words that were there.
And the summary is to provide the brief reasons for the decision. So we have no reason to suppose that this doesn't reflect the reasons for the decision?
Um, the only thing I'd be concerned about would be, um, in recording statistical purposes, um, for reporting, including in the annual report. for reporting, including in the annual report, we do look to record whether the outcome of a complaint is merit or upheld, partially upheld or not upheld. That wording has changed over the years from being no merit, merit or partial merit. My uncertainty is whether or not, in preparing the detail that's actually in the brief reason, the two may have been conflated. That would simply be my concern.
Can you explain to me what you mean by that?
If a section, well, regardless of the detail of the IGADF's decision, for statistical purposes and reporting on what proportion of complaints were found to have been upheld, partially upheld or otherwise, that is informed by not just the IGADF decision, also the CO's decision. So there will be circumstances where a commanding officer has effectively upheld a member's complaint, pursued appropriate redress and it has been provided to a member, and we would exercise Section 46.1A, not on the basis of merit, but a reference to merit might be recorded elsewhere in our spreadsheet that records that the complaint was upheld.
But this isn't, that would be an example of, say, the previous row, row 88, where the decision, it appears, has been requested to be revoked. That's not what this says on its face. Each of those examples that I've taken to you, on their face, say you've decided to stop considering it, or your office has, because it has no merit. If you accept the proposition that that accurately reflects the substance of the decision, would you agree that is a disconnect between Reg 46.1A and the basis upon which the decision was made?
If I was to accept the premise of the proposition, yes.
And would you accept that that would be concerning from your perspective as a director of this directorate?
I would be concerned as to whether or not it has properly communicated the, or whether it properly records the process that was gone through to reach that conclusion.
And would you accept that that would reflect one of the deficiencies in not having a formal quality assurance programme to ensure standardisation of decisions that are issued under this part?
Possibly.
Okay. Now, can I take you to some of the other parts of the table? If I could ask the operator to please turn to row eight and expand particularly again, rows L to K. So here again, Regulation 46.1A is purportedly engaged to stop consideration of the complaint. The brief reason given is that the process was not procedurally unfair. Would you accept, if that reflects the substance of the decision, there is a seeming disconnect between the reason and the purposes for which Reg 46.1A are to be used?
I continued to hold concern about it being a brief reason. I think there's circumstances where the Assistant Inspector General may have looked at what occurred and looked at how the commanding officer has reasoned that and explained that to the member, such that the Assistant Inspector General was satisfied that the commanding officer's decision was correct and communicated to the member.
But you would accept that in a circumstance like that, you don't actually, do you actually seek the views of the member about whether or not the complaint was satisfactorily resolved from their perspective?
That's one of the changes that we've been implementing to inform the risk of making these Section 46 decisions.
When was that change implemented?
I referred earlier on, it was either 2020 or 2021 that we had the increasing focus on communication with members.
And is that requirement to communicate with members when exercising the power under Reg 46.1A formalised in any guidance document or policy handbook your directorate has?
No, I have a draft directive that I'm working on at the moment that addresses that point, to be clear to those exercising 46.1A, that that is expected. It's been, if I may, this is part of the graduated improvement, that the offer of reconsideration when exercising the discretion to stop considering, we recognise that that may not be to the satisfaction of members in all circumstances. So our initial approach to addressing that risk was retaining the offer of reconsideration if the member was dissatisfied.
Mr Snatchell, this system has been in place now for over seven years on my count. It was put in place to give a more independent means of review and to protect defence members in relation to redress of grievance complaints. Would you accept that members would be concerned to hear that it is only now a process such as that to ensure complaint members are engaged with when a decision under Regulation 46.1A is to be made, has been put in place?
I can certainly accept criticism that it's taken this long, yes.
Now, just in terms of what this table shows overall, it records 190 complaints that were made during the period, 1 January 2020 to 7 July 2023. You accept that?
Yes.
Of those, 172 have been finalised?
I accept that. I've got no immediate recollection, but I accept what you're saying.
Of those 172 that have been finalised, 154, sorry, 133, or 89% of the decisions were stopped on Regulation 46 grounds. Would you accept that?
Yes, I would.
That number seems to me to be extraordinary. Would you agree, Mr Snatchell?
No, I don't think it is.
Why not?
Because I think it's appropriate use of the discretion considering each individual complaint.
You would accept, though, that is a higher percentage of decisions? So we're talking specifically, this table specifically concerns termination decisions?
Yes.
So in the case of termination decisions, 89.5% of the rogues made in relation to those are stopped on the Section 46 ground. That's a higher percentage than rogues as a whole. Would you accept that?
If that's what you've analysed, I'll accept it.
Is that concerning to you, Mr Snatchell?
No, it's not. Because I think there's probably a level of skew in that, of the use of Section 46 to avoid saying things like, there's no merit in your complaint. I think it's a reflection of the well-intended trying to be soft in how the decision's communicated.
Okay, I might then turn to the next most substantive ground on which IGADF determines to not consider or stop considering a complaint is Regulation 46.1G. I might just ask if the operator can display that section?
I'm familiar with it.
Okay, certainly then, for the benefit of the commissioners, Reg 46.1G permits the IGADF to stop considering a complaint if in their opinion it is not warranted, having regard to all the circumstances. Can you give the commissioners an overview of your understanding of what that section allows for? What it means?
We've given consideration to the complaint and given what we've looked at, and Assistant IGADS formed a view that further consideration is not warranted in the fullness of the circumstances that are provided.
And again, is there any specific guidance given to you about the types of things to be taken into account in determining whether or not further consideration is not warranted?
No.
Or what the expression not warranted means?
Well, it's not warranted in the opinion of the Assistant IGADF.
Okay, can I ask? I just want to take you to a couple of examples in the table about the reasons given for a 46.1G decision. Can I ask the operator to please turn to row 15 and highlight columns L to K? So you can see there again, the language used is no merit.
Yes.
So there's an overlap in the language that seems to be used, at least on the face of it, between the exercise of the power under 46.1A and the exercise of the power under 46.1G.
Yes.
If we then go to row 17, the language here used is that the decision was open to be made and was reasonable in all of the circumstances?
Yes.
Row 20, the language used is that the decision was within the bounds of reasonableness when considering the totality of the evidence?
Yes.
What I'm getting at, Mr Snatchell, is it strikes me that really, there is a lot of repetition in terms of the reasons why the powers are exercised under Reg 46, without particular regard to the provision itself. So decision was open, complaint lacked merit, procedural fairness was not denied. Just litter this schedule in terms of the reasons given for Regulation 46 powers being exercised. Would you accept that's correct?
I can see why that would occur.
And why do you think that would occur?
Because if one of the reasons for grievance that the member has put forward is a claim of a breach of procedural fairness, then that would be something that the Assistant IGADF has looked at and it would be in their mind when making their decision.
Sorry, I think we're at cross purposes. My question is, can you give an explanation as to why, irrespective of the power that's been exercised, the same reasons, or the same themes of reasons, seem to be given? The decision?
I'm really sorry, I'm not seeing that we're at cross purposes. I, what I'm saying is, if a reason for complaint that a member specifically raises, which is procedural fairness, is a regular one, where they they're complaining about the decision to terminate their service, one of the reasons that they give is they believe they weren't provided procedural fairness, in making a decision on being satisfied that further consideration is not warranted in all of the circumstances, one of the things that we would be looking at would be to answer that reason for grievance that the member has submitted. I'm sorry if I'm misunderstanding your question.
No, 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 no. I guess is the reality of the process that's undertaken by your directorate, that you look at a redress of grievance complaint, you reach a view about whether or not you think it has merit or it's reasonable and open? And then there is a degree of creative licence, having regard to wanting to be soft, you know, I'm not suggesting for improper purposes, but there's a degree of creative licence then taken in terms of what provision you rely on to stop considering the decision?
I think the power that's being exercised is probably considered in light of how much consideration has been given.
But it doesn't seem that it's been considered in terms of a plain reading, for example, of the terms of the regulation. And I'm coming back specifically, I guess, to the Regulation 46.1A example. Would you accept that that's a fair criticism of what appears from this table?
I do accept that the use of Section 46.1A within complaint handling generally, complaint handlers at some point reach in some cases a decision that they're satisfied that further consideration, that their complaint has been addressed appropriately in the circumstances of the Commonwealth Ombudsman and the language that I've seen them use. They're characterising their decisions to stop investigating a complaint or to not investigate a complaint on their satisfaction that the previous person who has considered their complaint has done so sufficiently. Does that help?
It does. But would you accept that a risk with that is there is a lack of consistency in the decision-making that comes out of your directorate?
Based purely on what's presented there, no, I'm not convinced that there is.
Now, and I accept as well that you are not a lawyer and that you are reliant on training you get in relation to administrative decision-making. But, you know, I spoke to you earlier about the distinction between the concept of correct or preferable decision, which is that really merits review, and judicial review administrative decision-making, which is a decision that is reasonable or open and doesn't deny procedural fairness. Would you accept that, looking at this schedule, it seems that rarely your directorate undertakes the former merits review of a complaint?
I would say that rarely does the directorate come to a conclusion that the decision Sorry. I'll explain that a different way. I accept that it's rare that we would come to a conclusion that the decision is not what we see as the preferable one, such that the circumstances warrant it going back for reconsideration or a different outcome.
Okay, well, let's examine that proposition within the context of those complaints that the directorate hasn't exercised. the Reg 46 power in relation to them. So you haven't decided to not consider or stop considering.
Yes.
You have gone on to substantively consider. Can I ask the operator to please display row 6? And highlight particularly columns M to O. So this is a decision that falls into that category. The delegate has gone on to substantially consider it. You see, the language there used is grievance has no merit and redress should not be granted. And if I can show you the row 4 in the same document, decision was reasonably open in the circumstances. Just particularly, that's not the language of a merits review. That's not the language of a delegate who's looking at whether or not it was the correct or preferable decision. You'd accept that?
Perhaps not, yeah.
Why not?
We're not dealing with lawyers that are trained on that level of nuance of words.
Yeah, and I guess that's what, that's what I'm coming to in terms of the risks that exist within the new system, is that there is an absence of guidance about what a merits review involves. There is an absence of policy documentation about a merits review, what a merits review involves. And there is the absence of a formal assurance process to ensure a standardisation of decisions. So that creates a risk in terms of the proper execution of the powers under Regulation 47, wouldn't you accept?
Sorry, the powers under Regulation 47?
Sorry, the powers under Part 7 of the regulation.
I'm not sure that I fully understand the question.
So, you've just said to me, I understand, that the decision-makers, the delegates, aren't legally trained.
Yes.
So they can't be expected to understand the nuance of what a merits review involves?
No. I'm saying that the delegates aren't legally trained and their use of the words here is not perhaps as tightly nuanced. And it's... The training within the directorate for the decision-makers to make decisions is to look at those things. If they haven't quite communicated it with the nuance of words, I can accept that. But I think your proposition is you're trying to take me to say that it means that they haven't considered that length or that detail of consideration, and I think they have.
Well, let's test that in the context of row 4. The decision, the finding was that the decision was reasonably open. The brief reason, again, was that the decision was reasonably open. If there is a merits review underpinning that decision, it doesn't appear on the face of the reasons, you'd accept that?
It certainly doesn't appear there, but I can talk about that matter.
No, but the member doesn't have the benefit of a delegate sitting down and talking to them about it, or at least not the right. All they have is the decision.
I'd like to go into the detail of that matter, if I may.
By all means.
We formed a view that we had concerns with that decision. We tried to contact the member using all of the details of their contact that Defence and we had, and we were unable to contact them. It was a circumstance where they had been terminated, their service had been terminated. They lived in a very remote area of Australia. We phoned, we emailed, we sent letters to every address that we had to explore with them whether or not they even had any interest in being considered for return to service. That's my recollection of that matter.
But, Mr Snatchell, that's not the only occasion on which that language is used, you know, of a decision being reasonably open to the decision-maker. You would accept that in relation to those?
Yeah, I'd accept that, yeah.
And again, the difficulty there is, at least on its face, it doesn't look to the recipient of that decision that the delegate has engaged in a merits review.
To be brutally honest, I don't think many of the recipients of these would understand the term merits review.
But presumably, the members of your office should, given they've been asked to undertake that merits review?
Yes, and the merits review is part of the training that's delivered as part of that admin law.
And do you think it's a satisfactory answer to those members to say, well, they wouldn't understand it, so it's okay that the decision doesn't reflect that? Do you think that's a satisfactory answer to members?
Our training is to try and communicate to people in language that we think that they would understand.
Okay, well, I might move on to take you to some specific... I might move on just to take you to some specific examples, if I could. Mr Snatchell, before I do, I might just give commissioners an opportunity if you want to ask any questions?
Happy to. I just might start. Mr Snatchell, you said, I don't think any of the recipients of these issues would understand the meaning of a merits review. Did you mean they're intellectually inferior and they're not entitled to that review?
Not at all. It's, I'm concerned about the use of technical terms with specific meanings, that even the exchange with counsel, what I understood merits review to be was something different to what she was putting.
And there's usually an accepted meaning for merits review. It's reviewing the merit of a decision that's been made.
Look, I'm sorry if my explanation isn't considered. Since I started in this job, I've had numerous people come to me and ask me and say, so is a rogue merits review or is it legal review?
So Snatchell, are you saying because you don't think they'll understand that term, they're not entitled to that?
No, they're in...
I don't understand your point in saying they wouldn't understand it.
What I'm saying is, I'm concerned that there's a specific meaning that is being put on the term merits review, that there's not certainty over. And their understanding of merit review may not be the same as what my understanding of merit review is. To me, the important thing is providing them an explanation as to, or an answer to their complaint and the reasons why their complaint perhaps isn't upheld or has been upheld. I don't see the terminology of, or the use of uncertain terminology, may not be uncertain in others' minds. It can necessarily be helpful in those circumstances. It's certainly not anything criticizing or concerned about the individual, not at all.
I'll move on. There are obviously some avenues of appeal that people may end up in the Administrative Appeals Tribunal or Court or whatever, if they don't agree with what happens with a rogue. Is that the case?
Yes, I'm not aware of any of that.
Are there any avenues of appeal if I don't agree with a decision that's been made to dismiss my rogue, to say there's no basis for it?
Yes, there is. Commonwealth Ombudsman and, as I understand, the Administrative Decisions Judicial Review Act.
Is there any tracking or storing of information about decisions that may have been overturned? Lessons learnt, analysis of what, how many you might be losing in an annual figure?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, are we talking about rogue decisions being overturned or the...
Rogue decisions. If you, if you decide, your office decides, and I think the percentage was quite high, somewhere in the 89% category. If some of those 89% were taken to the Ombudsman or any other forum, and your decision is overturned, is anyone monitoring that or storing that data?
I'm not aware of any of those decisions being overturned.
So it doesn't happen?
No. May I indulge? Sorry, Commissioner, I know that you're on time.
Go ahead.
If we've made a discretionary decision to stop considering a member's complaint, and they complain to the Ombudsman, one of the first things that we will do is offer to reopen our consideration.
But are there any statistics kept or is any analysis done to see what went wrong with that decision to make sure that the same mistake doesn't keep happening? If it was a mistake?
If it was a mistake, no.
Okay. The other issue, I just want to clarify. You were asked earlier by Ms Longbottom about, in terms of a quality assurance process, that an individual makes a decision. You can't possibly see every or approve of every decision that's been made by a delegate. With that in mind, is there any, anyone really monitoring to make sure that those decisions stand up? Is there any secondary review?
It's a small group of decision-makers and I rely on their professional judgment that if they've got any concerns with what decision that they're making, that they do communicate with me and they discuss it. It's almost unheard of for a decision-maker to be making a decision in isolation without talking to other people and, I guess, bouncing ideas.
I appreciate that, it's just that the enormity of some of these decisions, these are human beings. This affects their lives, their careers, their families. It just seems strange that one person makes a decision and the only option to contest that is to go, you know, through a court process or Administrative Appeals Tribunal or whatever it might be. Should there not be, and do you agree, that there ought to be some sort of quality assurance about the decisions that are coming out?
I'm struggling with a practical mind to work out what that quality assurance could be beyond the training, I'm sorry.
Could be a review by someone of the decisions that have been made by a different individual.
Yeah.
You'd agree with that?
Sorry, yes, yes, I agree.
Okay. Just in relation to the specific case of MB2 that was discussed briefly with Ms Longbottom earlier today, you said you're broadly aware of the case?
Very broadly.
You weren't briefed on it or discussed it with those representing the Commonwealth?
No. I've read, I think I've read MB2's statement.
Were you aware that it was being raised?
Today.
In the Commission?
Yes, I don't recall precisely when the statement was provided to me.
How long ago did you become aware that it was a matter that had been raised with the Commission?
Possibly within the last week.
Okay. It's just, it would have been obviously far more beneficial for the Commission, and it's a very relevant matter. If you had been made aware of it and we had a chance to discuss it with you in more depth, but I'll let that slide.
Commissioner, I just want to clarify whether there may be a misunderstanding as to which statement you're referring to. It's difficult to clarify, because I know we can't refer to the names, but I'm just concerned that the witness may not be aware which, who you're actually referring to.
I understand. It was the witness known as MB2 who gave evidence, MB1, sorry, who gave evidence earlier today. In relation, very specifically, I apologize if I used the wrong number.
Yes, we got the statement on Wednesday night for that particular witness, and I am not in fact sure whether or not this witness has had an opportunity to read that statement.
Okay, thank you.
It wasn't included on the tender list for this witness, so as far as I'm aware, it may not have been provided to him.
Okay, thank you, I understand. I'll leave it at that. Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, I've just got a couple of questions. You said very early on that the, back in 2016, I think it was, that the, 2014, 16, was transferred from within Defence People Group, I think, the redress of grievance to the IGADF, but it was stipulated with no additional resources?
Yes.
Do you have any understanding why that stipulation may have been made?
I have no idea.
I suppose you'd like to speculate? No, I withdraw that. You indicated that, and I think you've just restated it, that if IGADF makes a decision to discontinue, the complainant is offered the opportunity for reconsideration. How many would actually take up that reconsideration offer? Do you have any sense of that?
I'd be speculating the number is low.
Do you think, and again, from someone completely outside the system, I can only imagine that if I've made a complaint about a decision that's been made, I've taken it to what's seen as the next independent authority, as in IGADF, and you say you're not going to look at it further, even if you offer me a reconsideration, I'm probably, or possibly likely to think, what's the point? Why would I expect a different outcome if I've kind of already been to a couple of destinations and not feel like I'm being heard? So whilst you theoretically offer, well, you legally offer a reconsideration, I'm putting to, I guess, a proposition that perhaps the member may not necessarily feel like that's a terribly open offer or an offer that's likely to give them a different outcome, I guess.
I think I can understand that at some point complainants...
Just give up?
Perhaps, either give up or, if I may venture into my own experience, I make a conscious decision that, and I'm going to get on with my life and move on, give up with whatever it was that I was pursuing. I honestly thought that, from my own experience, my decision-making with that is conscious, that I think, how much is this worth to me? Am I prepared, even if I think, even if I might think that it's a low prospect of rolling the dice of succeeding, if it was a matter that was important to me and if I was concerned about it that much, then I would roll that dice. I would engage that opportunity. But I do accept that that's very much from a personal perspective.
And it's, you know, I think if you put yourself in the position of many of these service members, they're quite possibly, and I don't know the breakdown, but possibly relatively junior members of the Defence Force feeling, and the system's already taken action. For example, if it's a termination, the system's already taken action. They may well be, as that example, they may already be out of the system. And you say, well, how important is it to me? It might be important, but they might feel it's a David and Goliath battle, that they just don't have the mental state to take on. Can I ask, just, I guess in terms of trying to understand whether there is any understanding of the service member experience, have you ever gone to people who haven't asked for a reconsideration in those circumstances to just explore or, you know, understand their experience?
No.
And you said before, just moving on, but I think it was 89.5% of the terminations that were stopped on Section 46, you said you weren't surprised by that number because it probably represents a skew from IGADF taking the soft option and saying, rather than saying, there's no merit in your complaint. Do you actually know that it's because you're taking the soft option? Have you ever stopped to look at that figure and to actually understand?
The short answer is no, Your Honour. The workload is such that it's not hit priority. The workload is such that it's not hit priority.
I guess I'm, you know, listening to counsel today and your responses and I, please don't take this in any sense as a reflection of your personal work or, but the challenge, as you were just saying, resources, workload, et cetera. There's a lack of policy guidance despite the fact that it's, you know, seven years since the changes have been made. There's the soft approach, which I appreciate you've described as within good intent, but has the real capacity to be interpreted otherwise.
Okay.
I put to you that potentially that, all of these things really undermine or potentially undermine the, any faith people might have in the independence of the Inspector General?
I can certainly take that on board. I honestly have a feeling that there's a very fairly narrow line of questioning being asked here in particular as determination. Part of me would like to have the opportunity to talk about some of the other things that we've been able to remedy through redress of grievance complaints. But I, I'm responsive to questions, Commissioner.
Okay, I appreciate that point. We may, we may explore opportunities to hear the, the other things you'd like us to hear perhaps. But just one further question, if I could, to help me understand. And I think that example that we saw just before kind of highlighted it. And you said early on, you know, the, the original decision is not kind of held in abeyance when, while the IGADF is looking at a matter. So someone for whom a termination decision has been made, they are terminated potentially while the redress of grievance is being looked at. I just, I mean, I'm, I'm not a lawyer, far from it, but it just seems to me to be not necessarily a fair or reasonable process.
I, I think the constraints of time prevent me from providing explanation on things like when we receive a rog complaint, if we have concern about it, we actually reach into the services and say, actually, I think you need to hold this person in where we identify it. It, it is a question of risk. And I'm prepared to reach in and help inform that risk in the circumstances where I see it. One of the matters that was on my tender bundle, I don't remember the one, was one of those such matters that it's taken an extraordinary long time to deal with that complaint, some five hundred plus days. And we reached in to the service at the time that we received that and said, hang on a minute, we really want to have a good look at this. And we did. And there were absolutely difficulties with how that matter proceeded. Challenges with the work that initially came through for a decision to be made and identifying, I think, problems with that work that had been done and needing for it to be redone, reworked. The area from defence that had done the administration leading to the termination was extremely poor. They were not overly cooperative in providing material to us and answering responses. You know, it, it absolutely doesn't excuse the amount of time that was taken. But we do act and we do jump in to do things to try and minimise that for members when we see it as appropriate.
Okay, thank you very much.
Commissioner Agnes?
Thank you, Mr Snatchell. Earlier this week, we heard evidence about how people's careers can be terminated through the Career Management Authority. Are there many redresses of grievance brought from that authority to your office?
We certainly get plenty of complaints about decisions to terminate service.
Right. As I understood the procedure, before the Career Management Authority, there was no opportunity for the complainant, if I can call the service member that, to appear in person?
No.
Is there any ability to appear in person before you're part of the IGADF?
If a person wants to do that and they communicate that, yeah, we'll certainly endeavour to, to provide that. That's one of the factors in deciding how IGADF considers complaints. We go through assessment on an early phase, looking at factors that we can identify. And if I look at the circumstances and think that this is a person who, there'd be benefit from engagement by a formal inquiry, that's one of the considerations that I make when I discuss with my colleague Director of Enquiries as to whether that's a complaint that would be best dealt with through her perhaps more formal processes. The Inspector General and I have had discussions recently, as we tend to at times. I think it's probably four to six months ago. Where I'd made the observation, I wondered what the rate of termination would be if delegates in the services actually sat down and spoke to a member. It seems to me that delegates in services are really looking to members who are having their service terminated, perhaps for behavioural grounds, that they're looking for the member to identify that they communicate that they recognise the gravity of their behaviour, they recognise the impact on the unit, potentially the ADF, and try and communicate what it is that they're going to do to try and rectify that if they have the opportunity to stay. I think a risk of having lawyers involved in giving advice on responses to notice to show cause is that those responses become very legalistic in nature and don't become a personal communication from the member, which is what the, the delegates might be particularly looking for. And that's not a criticism of the lawyers, that's simply a statement of reality. I think there's that risk. You know, I, I, you know, I guess I floated the idea of a trial, whether it'd be interesting to do a trial where a delegate would make a decision on termination on the papers and another delegate would actually meet with the person. I'm not sure of the logistics of that being achievable and I'm, I'm not even sure whether it's something that, that the IG would take forward or a suggestion to be made. But, sorry.
Oh, go on.
Look, it's, you know, it, it's just, I guess, the range of thought of things that have come to mind.
Now, let me revert to one of my many failings, I'm sure, with being a lawyer by background. If you did have somebody coming to appear before you in such a circumstance, do you have any powers to take evidence from the person or to supplement the evidence already available?
Yeah.
You do. You swear people in, you can put them in a witness box if you like or?
Look, I'd, I'd have to take advice on to that extent. But it, it's entirely open to members when submitting complaints to provide additional information. That's part, part of the move to increase communication with members after they've received a CO's decision, to see if there is anything additional that they'd like to provide. It's whether something falls out of the CO's decision that they either hadn't thought of until then or that they thought of after the time period to submit their rog.
I'm actually asking these questions principally because of earlier evidence we heard this week from Judge Douglas Humphries, who's, you may be familiar with him. He's had both military experience as a reserve officer and legal experience in the military context. And he made a recommendation to us that perhaps alternatively or certainly additionally to the power to go by the rog process, that there should be a power to go from the Career Management Authority directly, for example, to the Administrative Appeals Tribunal, where you could have a full merits review based on fresh evidence. And you wouldn't necessarily be limited by the considerations in section forty six of the Defence Regulation. So that it would be a, a wide discretion. Do you have any comment on that as a recommendation?
I do, but it's a complex issue. I, I, I wonder what the ill is that is sought to be cured by that.
I suspect that, getting to the heart of our terms of reference, if you have someone who's being terminated from a force and very vulnerable because of that, they may perhaps feel that they've been through a more just process where they've had a chance to give evidence to be heard independently of the Defence Force.
My, my mind wonders whether the ill is further back than that though, Commissioner.
Sorry, I missed that part of your answer?
My mind wonders whether the ill is further back than that. I'm, I'm aware of dissatisfaction, disagreement with the nature of service. And ultimately, it's a broad discretion under section twenty four one C on termination of service. And Justice Logan's expounded that in multiple judgements and also papers that he's written. I, I wonder whether it's the scope of that that is the problem, that we have professional lawyers, judicial officers, all expressing concern about that, that they're seeing that as being or seeing decisions that are unfair. Is it because that's what is within the breadth of the scope of the discretion? Does that make sense? Sorry, I'm not sure I'm explaining very well.
I think I understand what you're saying and it's certainly Judge Humphries' evidence that he had been exposed to cases of unfairness that made him wish to recommend that there should be such an avenue available.
But, but, but i- is the unfairness from the lack of avenue of that type of review? Or is the perceived unfairness because of the tenuous nature of military service?
Getting back to your evidence about it being basically subject to the Royal Prolego to dismiss?
Yeah. Some years ago, I had, I kept count of the number of times that I saw both very legalistic complaints submitted about termination decisions and I also received a couple of phone calls from barristers effectively saying, if I don't get this, we're going to the Fair Work Commission. You know, there was this expectation that the standards that would apply to terminate an employee's service were the same standards or the same thresholds that would apply to terminate the service of an ADF member. And I draw that distinction regularly for no other reason than certainly through my, my training, understanding, that's what I understand. But also, a common source of complaints is that people's expectations aren't met. But sometimes people's expectations are also not well informed.
Or realistic.
Your words, not mine. Yes, I wouldn't disagree though.
We're going to break now, but just before we do, Mr Snatchell, your suggestion that there are things you probably would have liked to air rate and discuss, but it's for time and other reasons, we can't do it here, is a good one and I urge you that we'll follow that up. We have had a number of round tables with people away from the witness box, with no disrespect, with less legal involvement. And we have a chance to discuss things and see what works and what doesn't. I think it's worth pursuing. It is an important area, it affects a lot of people. And many people have come to us and said that the process has hurt them, intentionally or otherwise. We'll just have a short break.
All rise. The Royal Commission into Defence of Veteran Suicide will adjourn. The Royal Commission into Defence of Veteran Suicide is resumed. Please be seated.
Yes, Ms Longbottom?
Thank you, Commissioner Caudes. Mr Snatchell, I'm going to take you to a couple of examples, just for the purposes of examining the process involved. But before I do that, I just wanted to touch on the question of the likelihood of success of a redress of grievance complaint. And that is really the likelihood that a redress of grievance complaint with respect to a termination decision will be resolved in favour of the member with a recommendation being made for redress. That is, the termination decision being reconsidered. I want to ask you that question in the context of the table we've just been going to. So it's an exhortee to the response to NTGIGD zero zero six. Can I suggest to you that when one looks at that table, of the one hundred and seventy two redress of grievance complaints made during that period that have been finalised, only four or two point three percent of cases have been found in favour of the member with a recommendation being made for redress. Would you accept that? And there are some years, so for example, the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two financial year, there were no redress of grievance complaints found in favour of the member with the, with a recommendation being made for redress.
Yes, I'd agree with that.
So in terms of those questions that the Commissioners were asking about the system, from a member's perspective, if you're faced with a termination decision, going through this process, it would seem is unlikely to meet with success?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to take you to one example of where there has been a successful redress of grievance complaint. And this might be the one that you mentioned earlier. Operator, can you please display tender bundle document number five, IGD dot zero zero one one?
I'm sorry to interrupt, sorry. We've just had a message that the live feed just showed the table with complainants' names on it. I'd just like to, time to check.
Yes, well, we, we cut the live feed and if that's occurred, we might ask for a non-publication order in relation to it, Commissioners.
Okay, that was, it was our understanding that that wasn't displayed to the public, but that has happened, you think?
That's what somebody who's watching the live feed has sent a message. I haven't had any other confirmation, Commissioner, that, apart from being told that somebody watching was able to see the names.
I'll, I'll ask those instructing me to undertake some inquiries and we can come back to that.
That's right.
Operator, can you please display tender bundle document number five? It's document ID reference IGD dot zero zero one one dot triple zero one dot zero eight zero four.
It says it's redacted in the index, but the document I have brought up doesn't appear to be.
Yes, but Commissioner, as I understand it, the document is being displayed Yes, but, Commissioner, as I understand it, the document is being displayed only on private screens for those in the room. It's not able to be seen publicly. And I'd ask Mr Snatchell just if you'd not mention the names of the persons concerned. So this is a decision that was made by you this year in relation to a redress of grievance complaint. This is one that was, and the complaint in question was a termination decision under section twenty four one C of the Act to terminate the member, and this is a decision in relation to which you have made a recommendation that the matter be set aside. Is this the decision you were referring to earlier in your evidence?
Yes, it is.
So this is the decision where I think you said you saw something and you reached back into defence and you undertook further investigations because of your concern about the process that had been used.
Yes.
And just in terms, just to orient the commissioners to the material, this is a minute. So is that, am I right to understand, this is a document that you produce for defence that documents the outcome of your decision?
Yes, it's communicating my decision to those in defence. We now long, sorry, it was probably a mistake at that time for that to have been on a minute letterhead, it probably should have been on a letter, letterhead.
Why should it have been on a letter, not minute?
Because some time ago, we changed to have all outcome correspondence going from the office to be letters, to avoid perceptions that, you know, were this inherent part of defence.
Okay. But then there's a separate, more detailed document that's also included in the tender bundle called a redress of grievance report that sets out your substantive reasoning in relation to that particular decision.
Yes, there is.
And just to orient you, commissioners, that's document, tender bundle document number six. I need not take you to that specifically, though, Mr Snatchell. Can I just take you to another decision? Operator, can you please display tender bundle document number three? It's document reference IGD dot triple zero seven dot zero zero one six dot triple zero Now, Mr Snatchell, this was a decision that was made by you, but some years ago in twenty twenty. I'll just give you an opportunity just to familiarise yourself with the document to make sure you can remember the matter that I am going to ask you some questions about.
I remember both of those matters.
Okay, so as you'll see, the complaint in this case was made in twenty twenty, the decision in March of twenty twenty, the decision in relation to it was made some months later in November of that year. Can you give, just in terms of process, can you give the commissioners an understanding of why a decision to stop consideration in this case would take so long?
Because it's ultimately a fairly full consideration of the complaint and the submissions that the member provided after they'd submitted their complaint.
And so when you say it's ultimately a full consideration of the complaint, that appears when you look at paragraphs eleven to thirteen and what follows of the decision. So am I right to understand, this was a decision you made under Reg forty six one G?
Yes.
So is this an example of a case where you undertake a substantive consideration, but you decided to take a soft approach in terms of the actual response you gave?
Yes.
Now, the facts, the subject of the complaint are captured at paragraph four, and at least, sorry, I withdraw that, the facts, the subject of the complaint appear at paragraph four of the letter, you can see that?
Yes.
Looking at your decision, you make no reference to the fact that those particular events occurred in two thousand and fifteen, so over four years from the time that you were reviewing the termination decision. Why didn't you consider the length of time, why didn't you consider how long ago the relevant conduct occurred in making your decision in that case?
I don't specifically recall.
Just in terms of the ultimate findings you make, can I just take you to paragraph thirty So my reading of that paragraph is, you there go beyond finding that further consideration is not warranted in the circumstances, but really to, in effect, express a positive view about the conclusion that was reached as found in the termination decision. Do you think that's a fair characterisation of what you say there?
Can I ask you to repeat the characterisation, please?
Yes. So it's there outlined that the conclusion that underpinned the decision was that the underlying conduct was manifestly unethical. You accept that?
Yes.
And I read what you say in paragraph thirty two as being a positive finding that you agree with that conclusion. Is that a fair characterisation?
Yes, I think it is.
So can I ask, just in terms of that idea of sort of a soft approach, where you've decided to stop considering a redress of grievance complaint, why in that case did you think it was necessary to go further and make that positive finding?
I don't specifically recall. I do recall in issue, or something that the member raised repeatedly in their submissions, was an inconsistent self-assessment, if I might put it that way, and I suspect I've overstepped the mark with that.
Okay, and I might just take you to one last example, Mr Snatchell. Can I ask that the operator can please display tender bundle document number thirty nine? I can just get the reference to it. It's W I T dot quadruple zero dot zero zero one three dot zero zero six two. And I'll just give you an opportunity to review that, Mr Snatchell. Again, it was a decision that you authored.
May I ask it be enlarged, please?
Of course. Could the operator please enlarge paragraphs one to five of that document?
Yes.
So that decision, in that decision, you exercised the power under Regulation forty six one C to stop considering the decision?
Yes.
And that process was reasonably quick. I think the complaint was made in, no, actually, I'll just stop there, actually, can I just, that's my mistake, I'll need to take you to another document first. Can I ask the operator to please display the previous document in the tender bundle, tender bundle document number thirty eight? The reference is W I T dot quadruple zero dot zero zero one three dot zero zero six
Underscore R.
Underscore R, yes, thank you, Commissioner Douglas. And I might ask, would it be helpful, Mr Snatchell, if it was expanded?
Yes, it would, sorry.
Yes, no, of course, we can, we can make sure that happens. Could I ask the operator to please expand paragraphs one to eight?
Yes.
Concerns are saying matter as the other document I took you to just before, and I'll take you back to that document. But you can see here, this is a matter in respect of which you exercise the power under Regulation forty six one E to stop considering the decision.
Yes.
And as I understand it, Regulation forty six one E allows that power to be exercised where the complaint doesn't include sufficient information about a decision act or omission to enable the complaint to be considered.
Yes.
Now, in this case, the complaint was made on the twenty eighth of October two thousand nineteen, and your decision came less than a month later. In a case where you're looking to exercise the power about a lack of sufficient information to stop consideration, do you reach back into the complainant and give them an opportunity to give you that further information?
If we don't do it directly, we do it through the chain of command, and with suggestions for the chain of command, or requests for the chain of command to provide, get the member support to be able to articulate and provide sufficient information.
Do you recall whether that happened in this case?
Not specifically, no, sorry.
And can I just, I'll just suggest to you, the evidence in relation to this case indicates that the redress of grievance was made, that response was received from you, and then it was after that response was received that the complainant took further steps, including in relation to seeking legal assistance. I might then take you back to the previous document, which is tender bundle document number thirty nine.
When you say that the evidence has that, is that because our file's been looked at?
No, there's a statement, so the statement is included in the tender bundle, I can send it, I might take you to that statement if it would assist for you to have a look at it.
I'm happy, I was just wondering where, what the evidence was that you were referring to.
Yes, the particular complainant, just to give you an opportunity to speak to it, the particular complainant has submitted a statement. I might just ask the operator if they could display, and I can take you to it, tender bundle document number twenty one, W I T dot quadruple zero dot zero zero one one dot zero 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 one underscore R. And then the relevant passage appears at paragraph sixty one to sixty four, and I'd just ask the operator to expand that so Mr Snatchell can read that. If the operator could please go to paragraph sixty one of that document. Operator, my apologies, maybe tender bundle document number twenty three, W I T dot quadruple zero dot zero zero one three dot triple zero one underscore R, but again, at that same So just take an opportunity to read that, Mr Snatchell.
Yes.
So that is the complainant's account of the process. You don't put in question anything that's said in those paragraphs?
Well, I'm happy to assume that they were correct.
Yep, and then if we could then please turn, operator, to paragraph sixty eight
Yes.
And you'll see there, the complainant talks about then getting legal assistance to put in a second complaint.
Yes.
And I'll take you back to that document, so it's tender bundle document number thirty eight, W I T dot quadruple zero dot zero zero one three dot zero zero six zero. No, my apologies, it's tender bundle document number thirty nine, which is W I T dot quadruple zero dot zero zero one three dot zero zero six two. And if you could expand paragraphs one to five. And so the simple point I'd seek to make is, you then considered the complaint again. Well, you refer there to both the initial complaint made on the fourteenth of October.
Yes.
And then a second complaint that was made in twenty twenty. And you exercise your power under Reg forty six one C to stop considering it.
Yes.
But to transfer it across to the Directorate of Enquiries and Investigations.
Yes.
Can you just briefly tell commissioners when you would exercise that power?
In circumstances, when we consider a formal inquiry, maybe, may, maybe, maybe more appropriate, or maybe warranted, circumstances can include where members have concern about others of higher rank than them as to whether they're being truthful, in whether they have been truthful in earlier, in earlier investigations or fact findings, where there would appear to be a compelling case to formally interview the complainant, or perhaps not compelling, but to have that opportunity for the member to be engaged through a more formal inquiry process. I'd normally make that decision in consultation with the Director of Enquiries. I think there's a range of other factors that we I think there's a range of other factors that we'd take into consideration in making that decision.
And, and just in terms of process, so this, the questions I'm about to ask aren't directed to your specific decision-making, but a question about potential risks or gaps in the process.
Okay.
Would you accept that this is a case that illustrates those risks? Because it was only with the assistance of legal personnel that the individual was able to make a complaint that went on to be substantively considered by the OIGADF?
Yes.
No further questions, thank you, Mr Snatchell.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown, are there any questions? Commissioner Douglas, no questions? I don't have any questions either. Miss Wright, is there anything you wish to raise?
Thank you, Commissioner, just one question, Mrs Snatchell. You said earlier that there might be some other matters you'd like to raise, given the chance, and it's entirely up to you. But was there anything in particular, in particular, that you'd like to have an opportunity to raise now?
I would just, I guess, like the opportunity to talk about some other matters where the outcomes have been rather compellingly in favour of members. I feel like there's a bit of a flavour of a narrow line of inquiry in relation to the rog process and how it perhaps rarely seems to deliver outcomes favourable to members. I'm not sure whether this is the appropriate time to do that. I'd seek your guidance without launching into it.
Thank you.
I can be brief if you wish.
I'm in your hands, Commissioner.
How lengthy a conversation is. There are a couple of other options that you might consider. One is making a submission. We're very happy to hear from you on that. And as I mentioned earlier, we've held a number of very productive roundtable discussions where people are not in the witness box and we ask questions and they ask us questions and we flesh out a whole range of issues.
Perhaps it's better that I engage one of those other processes, Commissioner.
I don't want to dissuade you from saying something now.
Well, you can then choose whether or not you add it into evidence or not after that, that's all.
And certainly, Commissioner Cowdys, if Mr Snatchell would like to give a statement that sets out those matters, we're happy to speak to our colleagues at the Commonwealth about facilitating that opportunity for him.
Thank you, thank you.
That might be the better way to go, but you can expand on it and take your time. Okay. Thank you.
I'd ask that Mr Snatchell be excused, Commissioner Cowdys.
You're excused from your summons to appear today. We do appreciate the amount of effort and preparation you've put into it and every witness we hear from is in fact very valuable. So thank you again and your excuse for me summoning to appear, as we said. Are there other matters?
Just one last matter. I've taken instructions, the table was not displayed publicly, we understand. So there is no publication, there's no non-publication order necessary.
Okay, thank you, it's good to clear that up. If there's no other matters, we'll adjourn till Monday, I think it's 8.30am. Okay, thank you.
All rise. The Royal Commission into Defence and Veterans Suicide will adjourn to 8.30am, Monday the 4th of September.